Okay. You rise and join us in the clinch as I call the meeting.
Aye, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, unbreakable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this here in the audience and those at home. I'll go right to item six, meeting with the new Reading Municipal Light. Thank you. Come on up. Actually, you can sit right there. You don't have to stand up.
Oh, do you? I don't need the mic.
Well, your mic doesn't really plus for people at home.
Bring the mic over for you so you can...
Well, that's okay. It's fine.
For sure?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I want to introduce myself. I'm Colleen O'Brien, and I am your new general manager from Reading Municipal Light, and it is an honor for me to serve you. And I've been there, it's getting to be six weeks, so I'm learning a lot about the system. I had the opportunity to meet with Greg a couple of weeks ago, and we had a nice chat. And I'm looking forward to working with the town. I'm not sure if anyone knows my history. I'm coming from running the utility in Danvers, which is the fifth largest in the state, as opposed to Reading, which is the second largest in the state out of 41 municipals. And I was at Danvers for 18 years. So I'm looking forward to retiring from Reading. So it's gonna be a long, a great journey. So if you have any questions, Greg and I spoke, perhaps you can, you know, run your questions through Greg, and him and I can chat, and I'd be more than happy to respond promptly to any of your questions or concerns. Okay?
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. O'Brien while she's here? Ms. Sturler?
Yeah, I would assume that Greg had pointed out that we were looking for a little greater cooperation during storm events.
Yes.
From RMLD, recognizing that there are some resource issues, but it would certainly facilitate the flow of information as to, you know, when power would come back and things of that nature, and also facilitate the response. I know you've only been there six weeks, but a commitment to look at that would be...
Yes. Actually, Greg brought that up when we spoke, and while it would not, we wouldn't be able to dedicate trucks to your emergency response facility because we have our equipment and our material and our command center, our control authorities and whatnot for safety's sake, to be dispatched out of Reading Light, but certainly before the storms and storm preparation, as part of our emergency operation procedure, we'll meet with Greg again with probably the police chief, fire chief, the town engineer and whatnot, and we'll have a discussion about what our, how we dispatch, what our protocol is, and, you know, we have a lot of trucks that go out, and we prioritize, we try to prioritize the outages. We're gonna get a list of, you know, any type of healthcare facilities or any evacuation centers that you may use in case it's a storm where you're moving people around, and we'll, I'll make sure the communication is better, and we can take it from there and get input from Greg's management staff.
By the way, communication's always been very good with Reading Municipal Light. We hope that, you know, that's maintained.
Of course.
Vinnie Cameron did a great job for a number of years, and it's always been greatly appreciated. RMLD's been very responsive, and I guess we expect nothing less, the continuation of it.
The benefit of public power. Benefit of public power.
Yeah, that's right.
But thank you. I will pass those sentiments along.
Mr. Prisco?
Just to extend off that a little bit, one of the challenges I think we were exploring and trying to solve was the communication part, and there was some discussion with Vinnie, and then after Vinnie, there's Mr. Sullivan, about having a dedicated North Reading person we can call. I don't think we're necessarily looking for trucks, but we were actually looking for our public safety officer or our DPW director to have a direct phone number to one person rather than get into the whole system. You, I think you have six coordinators.
Right.
You dial in and get dispatched. I mean, our goal was to have one person we can contact at a moment's notice, especially if there's a serious situation with this, you know, line down, trees tangled through it and all that. And I know there was a lot of discussion prior to your arrival about that, and it's kinda gone by the wayside, waiting, you know, the new general manager be announced.
Right.
If that's gonna be something possible.
Right.
So if that's something I would hope you would explore and continue to...
Actually, that's exactly what Greg and I spoke of when I met with them. We will, of the control authorities that are staffed, and we have that meeting before the storms start, hopefully in October, early November, and we'll be able to have a chain of protocol. And I understand that you want one person, and we'll do our best to accommodate that. I wanna revisit the emergency operating procedures that are currently in place and just make sure that we can, we can do that.
Well, and when I say I want one person, I'm not sure necessarily that's exactly what I want, but the issue is that I think we have one person now, but I believe they're responsible for two towns at the same time. So that's kind of a lot, at least that's the way it's been explained to me, and I may have misunderstood the process.
Right.
So my understanding is we have one individual we do contact, but they're responsible for two towns, so it could take a little bit of time to get a response back to us. What we're asking for is one individual for North Reading, 100% of their time.
Okay. I understand what you're asking for. I guess you would equate this to almost like the police dispatch. We can have a person that's your point of contact, but as far as dispatching the cruisers or the trucks, it has to be done in such a manner that, for public safety and a prioritization that goes along in accordance with our emergency operating procedure.
Right.
So it's more of a, would be a dedicated person to make sure that they answer the phone.
Right.
You'll have a number of control authorities because you have, you'll have circuits down, you'll have switching, and a lot of safety issues. You're probably always gonna have a number of engineers that are in charge of the dispatching, but we'll just make sure that you get the same person, and that person will answer the phone. I'm not sure if that...
Anyone else? Thank you. Welcome.
Just in relation to the investments, the recs, and reinvesting into the community, was a touchy situation a year, year and a half ago or so. I don't know what your thoughts are on those investments that we have, and whether or not any of them would be available for reinvestment, you know, the energy credits and...
You're talking about when you sell the recs, you take the money and you reinvest it in green?
Renewable energy.
In renewable energy.
Here.
Here.
Yeah, for example, I was in the midst of that issue. It appeared that the position of the board at the time was that, well, people are paying this extra, for this extra high-cost energy that is generating these recs. And my thought was, at the time, if they're being, if you sell them and collect the money and you can apply it to energy conservation, then I think you're accomplishing the same goals in a two-step process.
Right.
And one thought would be low-energy street lighting, things like that.
Right.
Could be applied using that money rather than just let the recs expire, which is the path that the board at the time pursued.
Right now, the policy is that the recs are sold for the ones that are worth money, and the ones that are not worth money are retired.
So that's a change from two years ago.
Okay. So, but I would like an opportunity to talk to my manager of energy services. As far as, I understand the money does go back towards, in an energy conservation manner, but I want to check with her and see where the money has gone thus far, and I can get back to Greg on that. Actually, I'm supposed to be meeting with Greg on a solar issue with her coming up shortly, and we can bring up that discussion and give you any information that you may need. But I believe that is the intent.
Just, yeah, just welcome.
Thank you.
Have much success. You're only six weeks into the job, so I'm not gonna, one of the things I hope we're really looking at is talking to not just North Reading but all your communities about LED streetlights. I don't know what RMLD does right now as far as...
Well, they're not doing anything right now, but I can tell you what I just finished in Danvers, because I'd like to do the same thing here. We, we did a report, a study. We were in, we were in the middle of a pilot when I left, where I had picked an intersection where you could actually look in four directions, and we worked with four different vendors and gave us four or five lights. The cost has come way down, so that the lights going down the street in the four directions, you know, the first four lights were the LEDs. And you're looking at cost, you're also looking at the lineman's ability to maintain it, does it open to the field side or the street side? There's a lot that goes into it when the assemblies are, right now, the light's on or off, so you know when it's out. An issue with LEDs are, some of them come in assemblies where if some of them start to go, you can pull out sections of them instead of an LED pattern or assembly that has 25 or 30 LEDs in them. So we're working with the vendors and the technology to see what works best. They do have roam systems where you would connect into your Wi-Fi and then into your fiber that could send a signal back saying essentially, "The light is out." And what that means from an LED standpoint is if you are about 20% failed, then your light is out. But right now, it's almost like, "Well, does that look kind of dim?", you know? So, you know, we wanna make sure that we do a cost-benefit analysis on it, so we'll probably start with a pilot. It is something that is, would be on my radar to do, probably in the same type of fashion. And then after you do the pilot, we can come up with whether or not it's cost beneficial to proceed with, now, North Reading has every other light...
Unless otherwise somebody's called and asked that we turn it off on the...
Am I correct that the homeowner requested Haze to have it turned back on? Is that a question?
Excuse me. Thank you. We had the town engineer, police department go out and review and come back with a recommendation, and if they find that there's a safety issue, we do notify, and RMLD turn it on.
Yeah.
Any further?
I just did a 1,600 light LED change on Chelsea, so it's, you know, we went from mercury vapor to...
Right.
Well, we're from then to...
Probably precious sodium.
Yeah, and then we just did a complete change onto LED, so it's been about four or five months and it's working well.
Well, the ones that are coming out, you know, you can retrofit them right into the existing Cobra Head.
Right.
You know what I mean? So a lot has changed in the last five years, and they've come from 500 down to a couple hundred dollars. So you're almost getting close to what a, what a conventional light would be. It's just what makes sense, and again, you're not gonna know when it's out, so when you start adding the bells and whistles on to it so that you're notified, that makes it a little bit more costly. Is the ones in Chelsea 20-year? Is it a 20-year?
10-year.
10-year. Okay. Well, when we start the pilot, I'll be glad to get your input on your lessons learned so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. That would be great. But I will ride by, is it all of Chelsea?
Yes.
Okay. And everyone's happy with the color of the light?
Oh, they're static, yeah.
Excellent.
They didn't like, you know, going from the mercury, going to the HBSs, they weren't, they weren't happy with all the colors, that yellow color, so they liked the way the color, even though I'm probably using less lumens, the light is a way to light, so they're happier with it.
Right.
And we bought a product that you can change, you can change the settings on it, so you can go to, I haven't said the lowest, but I can go two settings higher if the lumens, if people feel lumens aren't high enough.
Excellent. Well, that's great. That'd be a good town to, city to check out, see how it's going.
You're all made in the right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Once again, thank you for coming in.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay. All right. Have a good evening.
Take care.
Thank you.
I see that Mr. Ferriello's here, so if we can move to item seven, sign the October Town Meeting warrant. Mr. Chairman, I move to, oh, I think this was, I didn't sign it. Mr. Chairman, I move to sign the October 7, 2013 Town Meeting warrant. Let me just write that in. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Oh, Mr. Valiakonis.
Before you sign, I did want to bring your attention to the article that was drafted by Town Council on the matter of retaining walls. You recall that the warrant that you did see previously just had what we call a template for the article, and Council has come back with a recommendation to make retaining walls subject to a special permit. There are a couple of things that I did want to note, but it's Council's opinion that the bylaw would need to regulate all retaining walls, so that restricting it to septic systems, above-ground septic systems, in his judgment, wouldn't pass approval with the Attorney General's Office. Council has also put in that the height requirement would be four feet, and that there are also certain setback requirements when walls exceed four feet from both the public right-of-way and from side properties. And I believe that those are issues that the board had talked about previously when we had discussions about it. But I did want you to be aware of it because I think it's substantial, and it is encompassing of the fact that it regulates all retaining walls, not just those associated with septic systems. If you happen to answer any questions you have about...
Greg, I saw this this evening, and I went through zoning by law. Am I correct that this is, this will be a new article?
Yes, it would be a standalone.
So we don't have a current article pertaining to any sort of...
That's correct, and he doesn't feel that it fits conveniently into any section.
Anywhere else?
Just the aesthetics, and I'm assuming in section B, 3B, last page, second paragraph from the bottom, is that the area that addresses our discussion associated with that?
Exactly.
Okay.
And in fact, Council and I had that exact discussion today about the exact article that you wanted, because I asked him whether those terms that were there would define what we consider to be neighborhood character.
Uh-huh.
His response back to me is, yes, it would.
Okay. That's good.
I also like the idea that it's all retaining walls.
Yeah.
Well, our focus has been on it, you know.
I agree.
Septic system.
He does indicate that there are other communities that have these bylaws in place, and they have been approved by the AG.
Yeah, the other thing, Mr. Chairman, in relation to this, is I would hope that we had an offer from Chairman of the Board of Health, that they would look at, from an internal standpoint, their own personal regulations, and maybe if we could get them to dovetail it, their internal regulations with the bylaw, that would help eliminate any confusion for anybody that comes before them, so they could just say, "Here's our regulation, here's our bylaw, go see the ZBA."
I agree, and I had that conversation with Council today, that I have asked him to draft a regulation for consideration by the Board of Health.
Right.
To do exactly what you've asked for.
Mr. Rivers?
Yep.
Okay. Just one last thing, just to make sure, because I believe this says, it's Article 24, but it's really, it's Article 15, right?
No, it's Article 24 is the article in the zoning by law.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't reference the article in the warrant.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further? No? On the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item three, minutes, July 1, 2013, regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the July 1, 2013, regular session.
Second.
Motion.
July, which one?
July 1.
Your motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
July 1, 2013, executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the July 1, 2013, executive session, minutes as written.
Second. Our motion, I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
July 15, 2013, regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the July 15, 2030, regular session, minutes as written.
I misspoke, it is 2030. I don't think I'll be sitting here in 2030.
I apologize.
We're not there yet.
I might be.
You might be. I don't think I will.
Mr. Chairman, thanks for pointing that out.
I'll second his motion.
I have a, I just have item number four, appointments, election workers. It was, I made the motion, and I couldn't second it.
Mr. Stelary abstained.
Right. Mr. Prisco that seconded.
That's correct.
I agree.
As amended? Anything else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Someone's reading the minutes. July 22, 2013, emergency meeting session, minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I will be abstaining. I was not present.
Got a motion?
I move to approve the July 22, 2013, emergency minutes as written. Second.
That's right. I was all abstained, too.
Mr. Sturis here, he's abstaining as well.
I second it.
Okay. The motion is second. Any further discussion?
It was my wife's birthday, and I was awake. But you did a great job in declaring an emergency.
We didn't declare.
We didn't declare.
That's why we met.
I couldn't get there on time. You guys are in the long...
Not declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
302, extensions. Legal bills for July 2013.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for July 2013 in the amount of $4,716.44 as follows. Copeland Page General, $3,930.44. Copeland Page PC Labor, $306. West, $470.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Anyone here for public comment? Excellent. Item eight, street acceptances.
Oh, what about, what? The July legal bills, huh?
We did that.
We just did.
We did it.
I was making a note, sorry.
Were you napping?
Boy, you got some quick...
I voted yes.
I didn't vote yes.
You didn't?
I was making a note.
You missed it. Item eight, street acceptance, vote of intention. See that Mr. Carnavale's here?
Mr. Valiakonis, how would you like to address it?
This is a matter where the board actually has to take a motion of intention to lay out, so it's been motion prepared on each. Your action this evening will then result in the board scheduling a public hearing at its next meeting. At that meeting, there'll be any number of residents who may attend, and at that time, the board will take a normal vote to lay out. Once you approve, then it goes before town meeting. If any of those actions fail, then the street cannot be accepted by town meeting. So this evening is just an action requiring to the layout of the roads. I have the detail associated with each of them. I do not have the plans this evening, but we will have the plans when we have the layout hearing in a couple of weeks, and I can go through each of the recommendations that have come in from the engineering department of Mr. Carnavale, can, as we go through each individual roadway.
Well, the recommendations were in the packet, I believe.
That's right.
The recommendation to accept each one of these roadways and streets, so unless the board members wishes for the town administration to do so, I don't see the need.
I don't see the need.
They're all recommended.
All right.
Then...
Just in relation to the acceptance of them all, some of these are non-paved. Pardon me?
They're all paved.
They're all paved at this point? But as far as the standards that they're up to, once we accept them, we're responsible for, truly responsible, not that we are responsible now, because we have, on most of these, we've been maintaining them anyway, but now, a couple of these, one or two of these, the residents have chipped in to get them paved.
Right.
In another instances, the town has paid.
John Beckett Way is a subdivision coming through the CPC. Populate Terrace, that was paved through a DEP grant. Quimby was paved, Gage, Cameron, and I believe MacArthur, all through the 50-50 betterment program. The other, some of the other ones are before my time, so I'm not positive how they were paved. Again, this is a process to, we are maintaining them, and the Chapter 90 formula, 58% of it is roads, the other is employment and population, which we don't really control, but we can control this. So the more we accept these, the higher our percentage of getting, Chapter 90. We've, over six years, we've increased it by almost six miles.
Anything further?
No.
And it has to be done separate motion of each one, or can we do a collective motion that incorporates?
I would recommend that the motions be done as included in the packet, so that the board would go ahead and vote each one individually. That way they stand alone if they're defeated at town meeting, or don't come to town meeting, or vote this evening that's valid.
I was trying to activate things, but it just didn't work. Mr. Foddy, any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the layout of John Beckett Way as shown on a plan drawn by Hayes Engineering, Inc., dated September 13, 2012, by signing said plan and reporting to the town.
Second. The motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Oh, Mr. Valiakonis.
It's my understanding that this is the sole subdivision roadway, so this is a newer street, and I just wanted to be clear that that's what the board votes. It's not part of this list of the older roads. It's like no way we're moving.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Populate Terrace?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the layout of Populate Terrace as shown on a plan drawn by LeBlanc Survey Associates, Inc., dated November 7, 2012, by signing said plan and reporting to the town.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Haywood Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the layout of Haywood Ave. as shown on a plan drawn by LeBlanc Survey Associates, Inc., dated November 14, 2012, by signing said plan and reporting to the town.
Second.
Just a...
Do you want to start?
Just a question. Haywood Farms Lane, is that accepted?
No.
Or is it being proposed?
Not this round, but it's in the next round.
Okay, so it's not an accepted?
No, just Haywood Avenue.
Okay.
And Haywood, okay, was, Haywood Avenue is... I still think they...
It wasn't a map. Yeah, I was just curious as to whether or not Haywood Farms Lane was an accepted street or what the status is. Mike says it's still working.
So it's the one right off of Elm Street that connects to Haywood Farm?
Right.
So it's, well, which one is it? This is the one that's...
The upper right-hand corner, the U-shaped one.
One's an extension, right? Is it considered the same road?
No. There's two, there's one by the Greens.
Right.
And then it comes up and around. There's a loop around one piece of property on Elm Street.
That's why I asked if it was, I know it's an extension, but I don't know if it was considered the same road.
Anyone else? Can you just...
Thank you. It just goes up and loops around.
It's just a loop around the one piece of property on Elm Street, and we haven't accepted Haywood Farm Lane yet?
Actually, not the original. I think we have.
I thought it was.
I think we have.
That was my question.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, because I'm looking at next year's list, and it's not on it.
Right.[1649.12]
I believe it has been accepted previously.
Yeah, because that one would have been brought up to standards when it was built. It was a subdivision. This was the access to it. It was improved, but it wasn't necessarily accepted.
I'm just trying to get it understanding. Does this mean we accept?
Yes. Yeah, the whole horseshoe.
In U shape?
The whole horseshoe.
But I thought that, don't they do construction there? On the farm, on Haywood Farm?
Lane? I thought they were doing construction. It must have been a different road.
No, they've all been built down.
Elm and McIntyre, if you're looking to the right, there's a house they're going to tear down, put two new houses in, service, I think utilities are coming to McIntyre. For some reason, I thought it was the other side, like you were mentioning, but it's the other.
That's probably what I thought.
Okay. Discussion regarding Haywood Avenue.
Just the only thing I'm recalling, this one parcel that this horseshoes around was subject to a 40B application a few years ago, which was actually approved but never acted upon. And I thought there were some improvements that were going to be made, like lighting in the back corner, which is, there's nothing there. That's fine. I mean, if you could just look at it before, Tommy, again, the 40B was never, it was approved, but it was never acted on by the owner of the property. I believe they went in for an extension and received it. I don't know what the status of it is at this point, but that one home that's there is like a full family. And what they're proposing to do is build another home here. Regular structure is here. We're going to build another one or two units here, and this is all going to be a 40B. So I don't know what the status of that is, but there were some implications for site improvements on this.
We'll check and I'll be back.
Okay, to just be aware of it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Quimby Road.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the layout of Quimby Road as shown on a plan drawn by LeBlanc Survey Associates, Inc., dated November 26, 2012, by signing said plan and reporting to the town.
Second. The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Was it Quimby Road or Cameron that we're discussing, the hydrant in June?
That was Cameron.
That was Cameron. That's coming up? I know, same neighborhood. I don't, Mr. Chairman, whether it'd be appropriate or not to talk about, you know, what's the status of surveying, the needs for, whereas we're accepting these ways. Not really part of it, somewhat.
My understanding was after following town meeting, I believe DPW and Fire went out and did the measurements, and the fire hydrants that are located in the area fall within...
Actually, the chief ordered it closer, so my measurements were not to his satisfaction. So what we are, as part of a water master plan we're doing now, there's going to be an analysis of every hydrant in town, drawing a 250-foot radius around it, and just to show which homes are not covered by that radius.
And we're also going to take a look at some of the other unaccepted streets, of which this one is not.
There's a lot of water mains.
Right.
We'll identify homes that don't have a hydrant within 250 feet and 500 feet, and that'll drive future capital improvements.
Including Swan Pond, I suppose.
We are doing analysis on that, and that's a lot of money.
Okay.
There's no cheap way to get water there, unfortunately.
But we're going to at least include that in the analysis?
I've already done the analysis separately.
Right, but including the whole master plan as to areas that are not covered, and then some other mitigating things we may be able to do, such as turnarounds for the fire trucks and things like that.
Yeah, we had engineer study that for the turnarounds for the paving of the road. Coming down from Adrian, coming up through Swan Pond Road, and it's a long way and it's very expensive. We looked at variety ways to pull from the pond. It just doesn't work, unfortunately, the pond, the height, it wouldn't work. The fire trucks can't go in and pull from there either, so putting water mains in, putting cisterns in, the fire department does not want cisterns. That's one quick way to have something there, basically a big tank on the ground.
They don't want those? They'd rather have nothing?
They would prefer to have a water main.
I'm sure they would. But in the absence of that, that's, yeah, we look at some contingents, and again, I'm sorry, this is off of the topic of Quimby, but...
I can, I can find the whole report. We looked at every permutation.
So at least it would be, you know, proposed to the board for consideration because the people up in that area have been looking for some sort of protection for years. And, you know, while the most advantageous and desirable route to take is the most costly, maybe there are some other mitigating...
Roseley, usually every three or four weeks she's calling, so any day now she'd do the call.
That's good, and hopefully she's watching, she will give you a buzz, I'm sure.
Mr. Carnavale, when you stand there, I just want to be, just trying to be clear, the fire hydrant issue we hit at the Cameron, was it the measurement you had put us within the recommended fire safety standard?
No, the chief ordered, it's not close enough for the chief. He would like it no more than 500 feet.
And I think that's...
So in that location, it does need a hydrant. The question is, do we extend the water main down there? Do we put a stub and a hydrant? And I think we kind of left it, and let's look at everything and come up with a master plan, what to do.
Okay.
I think that's the way we left it, too.
Right.
Before we point this neighborhood, that neighborhood, we want to take a look at the most cost-effective way of meeting the needs of the most...
And we should be, the next two years, paving Central Street, so we'll have to do that sooner than later.
Thank you.
To get, at least get a stub in there.
Motion made. A second. Engage. Motion on engage, or looking for a second?
A second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Cameron Road.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the layout of Cameron Road as shown on a plan drawn by LeBlanc Survey Associates, Inc., dated November 28, 2012, by signing said plan and reporting to the town.
Second. The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Caroline Road.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the layout of Caroline Road as shown on a plan drawn by LeBlanc Survey Associates, Inc., dated December 10, 2012, by signing said plan and reporting to the town.
Second. The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Caroline Road.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the layout of Wadsworth Road as shown on a plan drawn by LeBlanc Survey Associates, Inc., dated November 10, 2012, by signing said plan and reporting to the town.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Volk Street.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the layout of Volk Street as shown on a plan drawn by LeBlanc Survey Associates, Inc., dated November 1, 2012, by signing said plan and reporting to the town.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
MacArthur Road.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the layout of MacArthur Road as shown on a plan drawn by LeBlanc Survey Associates, Inc., dated December 11, 2012, by signing said plan and reporting to the town.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Leary.
Based upon the map, there's a gap in MacArthur Road. Is a portion of it already accepted, or is it?
I believe so.
Is it?
That's why it was not included. It's already accepted 1941.
I'm sorry?
It was accepted 1941. I'm sorry, I have a claim of...
That was before my time, yeah.
Really?
I'm surprised.
Not by, not by a lot. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along to it. Item nine, discuss October town meeting articles. Valiakonis, would you like to take the lead?
I would like to start with some corrections to the memo that was in your packet. I informed the board that the deadline for voting the warrant article motions was Monday the 16th, and we would like to get them done sooner. I'm hoping that we can vote many of the motions this evening on the routine articles. I've also informed the finance committee that their recommendation would need to be completed the week before. Again, my mistake when I looked at the calendar, I didn't realize that, in fact, we have the two-week notification requirement for providing a copy of the warrant to our residents, so I wanted to be sure upfront about that, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
So what's the deadline we need to vote these by?
Uh, next week, end of next week?
End of next week.
Tonight?
Tonight.
All right. Let's do it.
Let's proceed. Let's proceed.
Valiakonis?
I could start at the top of the list. Article number one, if we can all find it. Article number one is hear reports of boards and committees, and, Mr. Chairman, if you would like to indicate who will be the designee or the spokesperson, that will help us when we put the motions together.
All right. I'll take one. Do you want us to vote?
Yes, please.
So moved, moved to recommend.
Second. The motion is second on article one. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article two is bills of a prior year. Council informs us that this is subject to a forfeit's vote. Typically, what we have is workers' compensation bills. I'd like to ask the finance director, who's here this evening, with your permission, whether there are any additional bills that would be going on the warrant for article number two.
Mr. Paveo, nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Good evening.
Thanks for joining us.
We have a total of $861 in prior year bills. Like Mr. Valiakonis said, there are some workers' comp, there's also some small various bills that are prior year bills. One was for recycling of propane tanks for a waste collection day, and really, the other ones are for medical treatments for in-service public safety officials.
Thank you. What was it, 800 and how much?
61.
Mr. Masari?
What are you recommending for a source of funding?
Available funds. Fortunately, there'd be free cash or transfer from an existing appropriation.
Move to recommend.
Second.
I'll take it. The motion is second. Any further discussion? Those in favor of recommending?
Aye.
Article three, fund 2013 snow and ice deficit.
As you know, the past fiscal year 2013, we incurred a substantial snow deficit. We do have some funds that we've earmarked toward satisfying that deficit. I'd like, again, to call on the finance director with your permission to report on the exact amount of the deficit at this time.
Sure. Shaun, you're doing this one, too. We're going to set you up so you can sit right here with the microphone. How's that make it easier? You don't have to go back and forth. Unless you want the exercise, tough save.
The total snow and ice deficit is 249,860.
Thank you. Mr. Foley?
Have we received the funds from FEMA as of yet?
No, not yet.
Do you know what that amount is?
176,000, I know.
So, should we be just...
Sorry?
Probably this fiscal year.
Well, I would think you'd probably get it in the next couple of months. So would that be subtracted for the 249?
Only if we receive it by the end of the month.
You need a source of funding for town meeting.
The recommended source of funding is? Available funds, which would constitute free cash? Or the FEMA reimbursement that Sackman Foddy alluded to earlier?
Mr. Masari?
I move to recommend funding of the snow and ice deficit from free cash or FEMA.
Second.
But is that just limiting us, or is it, would there be other available funds that you could utilize?
It's unlikely that there'll be any other available source of funds other than the two that we just mentioned.
Okay. Motion and a recommendation, a second, and a recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll take it, then.
Article four, transfer of funds into the capital improvement stabilization fund. The warrant article has been used as part of our capital funding plan to fund capital and also to pay a portion of our debt service. The amount to be going into it remains to be seen. It'll be subject to our free cash certification, which is due at the end of this month. However, inclusion of this article is standard for both our June and October town meetings. So without a dollar amount, I would request that the board defer action until town meeting.
So moved.
Do we, should we just wait until June anyhow?
No. What we typically like to do is we'd like to have an amount that we will then consider and have as an available fund when we begin the budget planning process for fiscal year 2015, and without that, we don't have an identified source of funds for capital and for how we use this fund in the past. So I would recommend that we look at it for funding in October. That's how we've done it before.
Motion to recommend a town meeting? Is that...
Yes.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Motion and a second to recommend a town meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Masari, want to take that one?
Okay.
Article five, appropriation of money to the stabilization fund. A placeholder article, the amount is to be determined. What we'd like to do is use some of our available funds to fund additional sums to the stabilization fund. This is in keeping with the town's bond rating, trying to keep that up in the recommendation of our auditors and DOR that we use the stabilization fund as a way of increasing it consistent with the policy that had been put forth by the finance committee and approved by the board of psych, and that it be 5% of our net revenues. So I recommend that it be acted on at town meeting.
No motion?
So moved.
I'll take that as a motion and a second. Recommend a town meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Article six?
Who's going to do these, by the way? Who's going to do the last one or this one?
Mr. Masari. The last one also?
Yes. Article six is the transfer of funds to the OPEB liability trust fund. We did appropriate monies into this account at a prior town meeting, so we do have a small balance that's begun to be added. I would defer to Ms. Paveo, with your permission, to report on what the balance on that account is.
The balance in the OPEB liability trust fund is 154,475. 154,475.
Got a ways to go.
Just another 39,185.
Recommended town meeting?
Town meeting.
Another motion that we got?
So moved.
A motion, a second. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Article seven. Mr. Masari will take six. 789 will be Mr. O'Leary. You guys just don't like suspense. You like, you want me to, I'm sorry, notify you when it...
Who's doing 789?
Mr. O'Leary.
Fiscal year 2014 operating budget. As you know, we do have a shortfall in our county retirement account, so we will have to appropriate an amount of money to go into that. There may be some other small budget adjustments that we'll be facing going forward, but the major portion of it is, again, to fund the shortfall in the employee benefits or county retirement amount, and again, I would ask Ms. Paveo to report on what that dollar amount will be.
Sure. The difference in the budgeted amount versus the assessment that we received is 80,744.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's just due to the number of retirements that occurred?
No.
No.
It's a flat increase that came to us, a flat 10% increase that came to us from middle-six county retirement. The number was too round in terms of being anything that relates to our retirements. Obviously, they're trying to increase their reserves, and so we also received it, I think it was the day or two days after town meeting. Typically, we get this amount well in advance at town meeting. We budgeted a 5% increase and it came in exactly at 10. We've talked about in terms of what the source of funds would be, which would be, is it reasonably appropriate?
Yes.
So we would reasonably appropriate these monies?
And we're gonna, Mr. Delany?
Mr. Masari.
You're gonna be able to do that because we're gonna readjust the local receipt estimates that we use at town meeting.
Precisely. What we've done is we've gone back with our financial planning team and we've reported to the financial planning team that there's some opportunity to grow our local estimated receipts, namely in the area of motor vehicle excise tax. And as a result of that, we're able to close the budget gap and be able to pay for this reason appropriate.
Any further? Recommended town meeting because we have issues that are outstanding, Mr. Valiakos?
I, this is the only issue that we anticipate. If there is something else that does come up, Mr. Chairman, perhaps we could vote it at that time. We will put this amount in the warrant. We think the public would want to.
Moved to recommend.
Motion to recommend?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Article eight.
Article eight, there was a deferral from June town meeting. There was a presentation made to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee on various improvements to be made to municipal buildings. We'd envision that the amount of monies that would be necessary would be the amount of $50,000. That $50,000 would be utilized consistent with the recommendations that were presented to the CIPC in the spring, which we're in the process of putting together that list and refining it. I don't know if Mr. Carnavale has anything to add this evening?
The intent is the things that don't make the capital on an individual project will see flooring. The top four that John Welsh recommended are flooring in this building, building on the common, the kitchen and the fire station and the library. They all have significant floor meetings, all individually below the $15,000 cutoff. Those are the majority of the projects.
Source of funding?
Available funds.
At the last meeting, I suggested we take a look at the sign on the common and also the one in front of the third meeting house.
We already have POs, we're already seeing those.
I can circle back. I did speak with John Welch today and as Dick said, we have a PO out there. I asked him to come up with a hard cost for those signs that you indicated.
Mm-hmm.
And I had hoped that I would have it today. Don't have it today. I'll get on it tomorrow and report it back to you and board members.
But that would be covered on operating budget. That's not on the cap.
Okay.
Unless we have a donation.
Unless somebody wants a donation.
Unless we have a donation, in which case we'd be happy to rescind those purchase orders.
Depending upon, just for the information of the other board members, I was contacted last week by some person, organization who read in the newspaper, mentioned the sign on the common and may have an interest in contributing towards the cost of funding it. So told them I would get back to them with a price.
Very good.
Hopefully it comes to fruition. If not, it needs to be taken care of anyway. Thank you.
Sorry, I had to step out, so it sounded like Mr. Carnavale, you hear is which you would already have planned for this.
Operating common. Yeah, the thought was. The thought was projects that individually too small to meet the capital cutoffs, mostly floors. The most prevalent need of all departments is refurbish the floors.
You're talking flooring in town hall, building on the common, fire station, kitchen and library.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Mr. Prisco.
So in particular in town hall, you're talking every floor? That hasn't been.
No, we don't mind it do that. Usually John picks the worst section and we try to, I think we've done it somewhere in this side. I think we do go to your side of the building. We try to alternate so it's fair and everybody gets a piece of it.
Did you say library?
So this hallway, this hallway and this room won't be touched?
I mean, it clearly needs it. John has found that a floor versus a rug seems to be cleaner.
Yeah. I highly agree.
They gouge a little, so not as hard as a rug. So it's kind of a trade-off.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion to recommend and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Article nine.
Article nine seeks the sum of $238,000 to complete the town's road improvement program that was recommended by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for June town meeting. You'll recall that those numbers were based upon some very generous estimates that we received from the governor's office, which provided for a substantial increase in Chapter 90 funds. We've since learned that the governor is recommending funding at level amounts to fiscal year 2013. So the $238,000 that you see represents the amount between the governor's approved number and what was approved by the CIPC for June town meeting. You'll also recall that there's some questions as to whether the state and the governor will fund the remaining portion of Chapter 90. And frankly, at this point, we do not know.
Mr. Fodey?
Probably some question I gotta ask. What happens if it does get approved?
It's possible that this item be deferred until the June town meeting. I think that the majority of the work is probably slated for the spring of 2014. There's an amount of money that's available right now to do the work this fall. The reason we want to do that is twofold. For the availability of Chapter 90 funds that may materialize. But secondly, we would intend to use free cash for funding this article. And I think it's wise to hold back an amount of free cash and reserve for potential snow deficits that may occur in the spring of 2014. Sorry to be talking about snow in September, but we could plan a point.
Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Bell, call and say, have you had any discussion with Representative Jones regarding the funding? And we'll get his thoughts on what he thinks.
Yes, there was a bulletin that was released by the MMA where there was some back and forth between the governor's office and the Senate leadership. And there's pressure from the legislative delegation for the governor to fully fund it, but at this time, the governor is holding out and holding off. Could be that something materializes and we'd be happy to touch base as you've stated.
I'd rather recommend hold off until town meeting before we decide on this one and maybe reach out to the legislators and get a little more feedback from them before we make a decision here.
I think we should just vote it down, defer it until June. Pass it over. I voted down, pass it over until June town meeting.
I'd like to have it available if it's available.
Why? Because money's available. And they may have Chapter 90.
For the fall.
But it sounded like.
This is slated for the spring if I heard you correctly.
That's right.
Which means you put it off till the summer.
Which means you're putting it off until after June town meeting and then you'll be in the summer months and following fall. So if the money becomes available, a seasonal standpoint, that's, you know, if it's available, fine. We can appropriate it, but if it's not there, you don't have to spend it.
But you can't appropriate.
Well, you can.
Money that you don't have.
You're gonna take it from available.
Right. You gotta take it from available.
He said free cash.
Yeah. So I, I'm not sure.
No, that's why I wanted to wait.
But if the Chapter 90 stuff comes through, that gets certified by June 30th and ends up in our free cash for what?
No, it doesn't.
No, 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 no.
Go to Chapter 90.
I'm sorry, Chapter 90, okay.
Mr. Fodey? Couple of things. If you call back when we were looking at this stuff and we had found, back at last town meeting, we had found out that there was a good chance that we're gonna get an increase in Chapter 90. Stephen actually asked that we still fully fund it and do more work. So I, so that money, I believe we were gonna approve anyway and we were gonna approve this work. Regardless of whether we had the money or not.
I may be wrong.
Regardless of whether we had the Chapter 90 money or not coming in.
My recollection was that we were gonna borrow the money.
That's fair.
That's right.
But.
Just keep in mind that the borrowing term for something like this is pretty small. It's only five years.
Okay.
So it's a short-term borrowing, which means that the town faces some additional debt costs right out of the gate that is substantial.
I think it's a large amount of money to be taken out of free cash at this time.
Mm-hmm.
So do I.
I agree.
I suggest that we make our recommendation at town meeting that'll give finance, give Greg opportunity to look at other sources of funding in addition to talking to the legislature, trying to get a reading as to where they might be going with the additional Chapter 90 money.
I could look at that for now.
Yeah, that way we can still pass it over.
At this point, what's the administration recommend? Deferral of this article until spring town meeting.
Okay.
I have a motion to recommend a town meeting. Second. Motion and a second to recommend a town meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll be a strong advocate for whatever the board decides.
10, 11 and 12, Mr. Prisco. Article 10.
Funding for town road survey services in the amount of $20,000. As you heard this evening, there were a number of older roads that the town needs to have acceptance plans drafted. Those are based upon a survey. Mr. Carnavale is here. He can give you an idea of the number of roads that he would anticipate completing for $20,000 through you, of course, Mr. Chairman.
10,000 for $20,000, we do move between eight and 10. It depends on the streets and the complexity of the surveying. It's easy we go out for quotes for the surveying and they come back with the numbers. The initial proposal was for 32,000. That included, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight streets totaling about a mile and a half.
So the 20,000, the 20,000 would get how many streets?
Roughly.
All right, sorry, roughly how many?
Roughly a mile, roughly 5, 5,000 people.
So originally you said it covers the eight to 10 roads, but now you're saying that the eight to 10 was for the 32? The 20 will cover what?
Delete one street that's over the 20,000 and probably substitute a couple more. So it'll be an eight to 10 range.
Okay.
What I typically try to do.
Well, the distance is a little bit shorter, but you know, take other streets.
What I look for is streets that have the longest length. The idea is to get more Chapter 90 mileage. I just have to change it up.
What's the source of funds?
Free cash.
Thank you. Mr. Masari?
Question was answered.
Just in relation to, I mean, the original roads that you were proposing, it said it was $32,000 for those roads, which would give you, which would maximize availability for Chapter 90 consideration, is $32,000. So now what we're gonna do is cut down to 20,000 and it'll be less, less mileage covered.
Something and then between Liz and Greg can say, no, you're not getting this. We can only afford that. So I will make it work with those funds I'll advocate.
Reasonable explanation.
If the, if this article passes, then when, when would you have the survey work done? Mr. Carnavale? The article gets passed, town meeting, when would you have the survey work done?
Typically, it would start in the fall, do it through the winter depending on the snow. And we'd have to plan it by sometime in the spring and go through the process for the next town meeting.
So this fall?
Next.
Next fall.
So the approval will be next fall?
Once the money's appropriated, the surveys, it's good way to work.
And then by the time everything goes through CPC and everything else, it'll be for next fall's town meeting?
Right. By next July, we're ready to start starting the streets through the process.
There we go.
Move to recommend.
I have a motion to recommend?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Article 11.
On Article 11, the funding request is $13,740. It would be from available funds and the purpose of it is to fund regional housing and housing initiative project with North Reading, Reading, Danvers, Peabody, Sagus and Wilmington. So there are a number of communities that have joined together. The purpose of it is to monitor affordable housing that is created in communities and also look at ways of increasing the town's goal of providing 10% affordable housing so that we are ahead of the Chapter 40B project standard that the state sets for us. The scope, scope of services associated with the project has been drafted up by the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, which is applied for matching grant money to accomplish this project.
Guess I'm just having a little difficulty understanding what, what's the benefit we receive out of this?
Sure. Give me one second.
Because obviously there couldn't be a development in another community that we would get credit for.
So a study was performed by MAPC. The services would be monitoring services, which would be creating a central repository of affordable housing developments and projects, together with the number of units by project, developing and executing a monitoring plan, which annually monitors the ownership of units, approval of owner refinancing requests and related inquiries, and value ownership of units for assessment purposes. Additionally, there would be services that would be provided for first-time buyers that would be interested in affordable housing programs. And then there would be additional support toward meeting with staff and with local officials about housing opportunities in different communities, providing technical assistance on potential housing development projects and review local projects and documentations, prepare proposals and submission of services, including grant writing for additional assistance. So the, the project provides primarily monitoring-based, but as you can see under the additional services, what we want to do is identify potential projects and, and take an active role in proposing those before town boards and committees.
But identifying potential projects where? I would imagine there are only projects in this community, so.
That's right.
We would be aware of those projects.
Yes, they would be, they would be aware as soon as the ZBA or the planner became aware of different projects, the Regional Housing Office would become involved.
And/or if we wanted to take the initiative and try and stimulate some affordable housing.
Right.
Rather than reacting, take a more proactive role. In addition to that, it appears on this monitoring system would put our units that we currently have on the radar screen in relation to when those certificates expire and are no longer given credit to the community. I don't know that we actually.
Do that?
Have that in-house information. Because most of the 40B projects, again, while they come through the local zoning board of appeals and are approved here at the local level, they're still regulated by the state and the approval blessed by the state and those terms and conditions for those certificates, you know, generally it's 25 years and they've been pretty staggered. We had a lot of activity there for, you know, five, eight-year timeframe. But that's been probably eight to 10 years now. So we should really get a handle on what we have, when they're gonna expire, who the true ownership is. And, and I think MAPC is a good resource to have them help, help us quantify it, monitor it and keep it on the radar screen. And again, the grant writing aspect of it is something that we should be interested in too.
Well, that, that's the most interesting part of it. Mr. Prisco?
My understanding of this was several towns being considered, Reading's the lead.
That's right.
And then they're gonna select four others to join them. So I'm not even sure.
Total of six communities are part of the grant application that was submitted.
So they're gonna pick five other communities to join them?
Correct.
So we're not guaranteed we're gonna even be selected?
The grant application that's been submitted and the letters we've submitted, because I had to submit a letter of endorsement, is that North Reading wishes to participate in the project. We will not be given an opportunity, obviously, if we don't appropriate monies. And I'm anticipating that if we appropriate monies, that opportunity will be available to us.
Yeah, was this a one-time amount? Or is this an annual amount?
That's right.
Source of funds again?
Would be available funds. I just wanted to point out, because as part of the, the grant application that's here is, we are the highest of all of the communities in terms of our percentage of affordable housing, which is interesting to see. We're, according to this, we're at 9.5%. And on the low end, you have Sagus and Reading, which are at 7.1%. So again, we have an interest in keeping that number as close to 10% as we possibly can.
I just foresee this collaboration looking to assist those that are in the lower end versus those that are closer to the 10%.
That's why I don't think we're gonna get selected.
Right.
So I see us contributing and potentially not getting a benefit.
The, the total project is based upon the size of the communities and the scope of services. For example, if you look at some of the other communities like Wilmington or Peabody, their cost is substantially more than the $13,740 that I quoted to you. Again, the budget is based upon how close communities are to the, to the amount and we are frankly at the very low end of the pool.
Mr. Prisco?
Do you have a recommendation from CPC on this?
I do not. It was presented to CPC. I have not seen a recommendation back from them yet, but it was presented to them and I know that I've been working with the, with the planner on this issue.
I'd like to see what they have to say.
Board members have anything further before I ask for a motion?
I, I'm generally in favor of the proposal, but I would move to recommend a town meeting.
Motion to recommend a town meeting.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Then you can get some feedback from CPC.
What was their recommendation?
I agree. Article 12?
Article 12 is for a feasibility study associated with a municipal solar installation. I had a conversation with the RMLD director who was here earlier this evening. Frankly, I'd like the RMLD to be a participant in this project, but in order to get it off the ground, we need to do a feasibility study. I'm waiting back for some quotes from a vendor that can provide us with that. I do not have a dollar amount to report to you this evening. I do not have a dollar amount to report to you this evening.
Move to recommend a town meeting. A motion to recommend a town meeting? You have a second?
Second.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Article thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, Mr. Fode. Motion.
Thank you. Article thirteen, the sum is eight thousand dollars. It's for the purchase of four AEDs to be located, two here in town hall, one at the DPW garage, and one at the library. And they're at a cost of two thousand dollars per unit. We would purchase them through the state contract. And there's no training that's required. They would be in publicly accessible areas.
To the libraries, actually?
One, no, to the town hall. Two at the town hall, one at the library, and one at the DPW. I'd mentioned that the senior center already does have one, as do all of the schools.
Does, is there a life expectancy for these?
There is.
Survival?
Yes, survival, yeah.
There is.
As far as, you know, like the one at senior center, I don't know how.
Yeah, the, the battery needs to be charged on occasion.
Begin inspecting. Was that available funds?
Eight, eight thousand dollars in available funds.
Move to recommend.
Second.
A motion to recommend with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, what was the source of funds?
Available funds.
Available funds.
Very worthwhile to have.
Article fourteen?
Fourteen, awaiting quotations on this. Now, this is consistent with the board's discussion at its last meeting. I'll have that amount for you for your next meeting.
Move to recommend a town meeting. A motion to recommend a town meeting?
Second.
Second. Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Article fifteen.
Fifteen is the article that you considered this evening earlier before the warrant was signed. Again, it's regu, providing that retaining walls be subject to a special permit and that a new section be added to the zoning bylaws dealing with retaining walls over four feet in height.
Move to recommend.
Second.
A motion to recommend with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Just as a way of information, since the chairman of the board of appeals is here, we're looking to put more work on you as far as retaining walls and special permits, anything over four feet. Going to go to zoning board of appeals.
That's what you like.
We're gonna double your pay. You're charged by the foot.
Did they not call for the vote yet?
Yeah.
Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, I will take.
I did want to mention on fifteen, the CPC will need to hold a public hearing as required by master of law. So, I will provide the board with notification when that hearing is actually scheduled.
Have they weighed in on this? Probably should have asked before we've taken the vote.
You talking about on the wall? Retaining wall issue?
Yeah.
They didn't want to sponsor the article.
And that was because?
Because they wanted the vote second to sponsor it.
Right. But do they provide input? I don't really care about who's sponsoring it, but-
They, they were aware of the intent of the article and, and declined to be a sponsor of it.
So, they haven't even reviewed it?
I don't care who the sponsor is, but I don't- Well, I think we just send it to them, they have to have a public hearing about it. And we'd send it along with a recommendation that the board recommends.
The passage of the bylaw.
And we'll see what the reactions. Can imagine.
Don't they have to have this public hearing before town meeting? And for action to take place?
Do they have a meeting before town meeting?
I've already talked to Danielle, they'd have to schedule, they'd probably have to schedule a special, but she's aware of that based upon our conversation.
Place out this way, we voted to recommend it. They don't hold their public hearing, so we can't take any action at a town meeting, right?
Wouldn't be due to any action on this part of this board, or any action.
No, 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 but what's, alright, so. All I'm saying is maybe we're better off just recommending a town meeting.
No, I think we need to send the recommendation to the CPC that we're in favor of it. We're sponsoring it? Recommend it?
We can change our recommendation at town meeting pending-
We have some strong objections, but I don't know.
No, I, I'm a little surprised and probably should have. I just assumed they were part of the process in reviewing it before it got to this point, so. My, my mistake for making that assumption. I'm definitely uncomfortable that we don't have any input from them.
Guess I don't understand what, what it means that they didn't want to sponsor it. I don't know what that means.
Well, that I understand, right?
Well, I, no, I understand, but it seems like there's more to it than just they didn't want to sponsor it, so I don't know.
Well, I, I'd be more comfortable if we changed our vote to recommend a town meeting than keep it recommended.
Fight watch.
I mean, I, I move to
reconsider.
Reconsider article, recommendation of article fifteen.
Second.
A motion to reconsider, and I have a second. All in favor on the motion to reconsider?
Discussion?
Oh, discussion, Mr. O'Leary.
No, I think the board feels strongly about it. We've had it reviewed by council, it's been proposed by town council, we're not reinventing the wheel, other communities have it. I think it's something that we've spent an inordinate amount of time on over the last few months, and we're recommending a change to the zoning bylaws for the, to the CPC for their input in in a public hearing and a recommendation, hopefully they're favorable. But I think we need to let them know that we're in favor of it. And the only way we're gonna do that is by recommending.
I'll show off the public hearing.
We do that too, but-
I mean, I think they have a full understanding that we're sponsoring this and we support it. I'd like to see their public hearing, if they're able to hold a public hearing to now in town meeting. Because if they don't, whatever we recommend doesn't frankly matter.
Other than, I think what's going to be printed in the warrant is important to alert the community as to where we stand on the issue.
Well, we have a lot of recommended at town meetings.
I know that.
Already there.
Right. This one here, we have spent hours and hours and hours on.
I, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Frisco?
I, I don't disagree, Mr. O'Leary, at all, except that we're continuing to do what we say we shouldn't do. And that is, we don't communicate. And this is all about, this is the only reason why I'm in favor of waiting till town meeting, because we need to communicate internally amongst ourselves because we, you know, it turns around, always comes back to bite us. I'm uncomfortable without having them being part of the, of the process. If they haven't seen this at all, I, I think it's, it's, it's not the way-
And they probably haven't, I think we, I, I just got it today, so I don't know. I don't think they've seen it.
Conversely, the next article has been thrust upon us too, and we haven't been asked our opinion on it at all. And it's a whole different way of doing business in town.
Well, we'll address that next.
Okay.
I don't disagree, we'll address that next.
Not that two wrongs make a right, but, you know, timing of meetings, you know, it sometimes becomes an issue. But this is not an issue that we've done and talked about, you know, behind closed doors or anything else. We've had several public hearings and input in relation to an issue that needs to be addressed. We're addressing it, no surprises to anybody. We've come, come up with a proposal, which I think is actually pretty good, far more substantive than I anticipated.
I don't disagree, I do.
And town council's laid it out in relation to how it should work and-
Mr. Fode? So, I, my question on this is if, we all agree we're in favor of it, if CPC comes back saying that they have issues with it, would that change our feeling on it? Depending upon those issues, one, one, they have to hold, we can't even take it up at town meetings, my understanding, unless they hold a public hearing on it, okay? So, that's one. And two is, if they have any input, yeah, I'd like to hear what they have to say concerning the draft up. Anyone else before I take a vote on the motion to reconsider? On the motion to reconsider, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Four, one, motion carries. Do I have a motion on article fifteen relative to recommending or recommending a town meeting or passing it?
Mr. Chairman, I, I move to recommend article fifteen at town meeting.
Motion to recommend a town meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
It's unanimous. Could make a recommendation sometime.
I know, I just thought you were just gonna-
I was looking to make it again tonight, but it's alright.
Article sixteen.
Mr. Chairman.
I want, well, I'm talking to Mr. Vali Konis, who's, I think, we're waiting for town council opinion on this?
Yes, this makes that there's a single appeal to Superior Court, whereas the bylaw provided for a intermediate appeal to the zoning board of appeals. That intermediate appeal is being eliminated to be consistent with state law.
However, the process that we have in place is not contrary. State law does not preclude us from doing it.
Right, that's correct.
Right.
It's an interim step.
Just, just as a-
We may give you something else, we may be taking something away.
Just a little bit of history, though. I mean, this took years, a few years back. There was a lot of discussion. Previous situation was that CPC attempted to basically implement what's being proposed here, you know, a few years back, and take away the authority. And the compromise was to allow applicants to go before the zoning board of appeals after site plan review with the CPC. So, keep it internally within town hall before anybody expended a lot of money in appealing their decision to Superior Court. Which made, in the past, has made a lot of sense. I mean, there haven't, there hasn't been an awful lot of cases of it, but what it does is it allows just another hearing process, did not preclude anybody from going to Superior Court. Should they disagree with the, you know, say the CPC approves the site plan review, the applicant didn't agree with it, goes before the zoning board of appeals, ZBA upholds the CPC's decision, they didn't like it, they can still go to Superior Court. Conversely, CPC approves the site plan review, applicant goes before the zoning board of appeals, it gets modified to a certain degree, generally with a lot of consultation with the CPC and compromises agreed to and moved on. I don't recall, and I could be wrong, any appeals being taken to Superior Court as a result of the process that we have. But I believe we probably have avoided some cases. Again, many times applicants go before the CPC for site plan review and certain terms and conditions are put in, in place as part of that site plan review by the planning commission. Some of them may be related and some of them may be unrelated to that particular site. The applicant then has a decision to make as to whether or not they want to appeal that decision or accept. Most recently, case in point, Starbucks situation. Obviously, I was not pleased with what I read in the newspaper in relation to restrictions that were put on that property owner, which is the management company of the, of the, that particular plaza, and requiring Starbucks to come up with an additional ten thousand dollars for the sidewalk committee. The applicants then had a decision to make as to whether or not they wanted to appeal that. The developer of those property and the management property, management company of that property has to make a decision as to whether or not they want to, you know, walk towards with the CPC as far as any future development of that particular parcel. They had the option, or had the option, to go before the zoning board of appeals. They, to this point, have opted not to do that. But I would just as soon have that type of a situation resolved internally here within town hall than go to Superior Court. I think it's been a good checks and balances whereby we have enabled and allowed applicants a reasonable opportunity within the confines of town government to get any resolution to make difference in opinion on site plan review without having to go to Superior Court. What this is proposing is to remove that option of any future applicants to do just that. And I don't see the need. I don't see, other than, you know, state law allows them to do that, this doesn't preclude them from doing it, just provides, provides another step for an applicant to get it resolved before they have to spend a lot of money and the town has to spend a lot of money going to Superior Court. So, my initial reaction to what's being proposed is status quo is fine and it's working.
I disagree. Mr. Frisco?
Do we know what motivated CPC to make this or submit this?
I don't. I think it probably came as a result of an opinion to town council. And council would have requested that the CPC implement this change.
I'm sorry, you said town council recommended they, they submit this?
Yes. I'm sure this didn't come up on, on their own to the CPC. And I don't know if it was relative to another legal opinion, that I don't know.
Mr. Fode?
Greg, currently if someone want, they could go to the ZBA, but if they wanted to bypass and bypass that and go directly to-
Of course.
They could.
Sure. Sure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I disagree with Steve. I mean, if we can try and resolve this stuff internally, I don't know that there's a need, you know, there's a need to send it directly to- And I, part of me thinks that maybe it's trying to discourage people from appealing at all because it's a, it's a tough process as opposed to bringing it to the ZBA and giving them a shot at trying to resolve. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, and you're just, you know, you're what, a couple of months behind where you were before, that's all.
I'd like to see what legal council, what their, why they made that recommendation.
Mr. O'Leary, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you might just come here up here, though?
Move the mic over to the podium, just so that your mother can hear you.
I just had discussion with members of the planning board and the planner early this evening, when this all kind of came to light to me last week. I was unaware of any proposed zoning change. So, obviously, I was a little upset because I'd like to speak with, to the planning board prior to them putting something forward. And so, we had discussions, and what I was told is that this came to light from the attorney for the people that have appealed the school to the board of appeals. And their intentions were not at all to delay the project. And so, they made it, brought it to the attention of the planner that the, there was two appeals. One was to Superior Court, one was to the board of appeals. Knowing that if they filed to Superior Court, it would have then put the project on hold, it would have stopped everything. And they did not want to do that. So, they chose to bring it to the board of appeals. This is what I was told early tonight. And so, they did not want to do that, so they wanted to try to take care of it locally. I was then informed, and again, I've not spoken with town council about this, and I spoke to Danielle, and she explained to me that, well, town council recommends it, and I said, well, I can appreciate that. I said, but there have been no issues between the board of appeals and the planning board. It gives people local relief. They don't spend thousands of dollars on legal fees, the town doesn't, nor does the applicants, and it gives them a local option. And if they don't like the outcome there, then fine. There's never been an appeal past us that's gone to court on this. And so, I says, I haven't spoken to town council, which I'm- I was gonna talk to Greg about speaking to town council, because no matter, I guess, how you phrase the question is, depends upon the answer that you get. So, I would like to speak to town council if that would be all right, if there's a need to. And I just don't really feel there's a need for change in this particular case. And the school is a perfect example. If, what I was told tonight was correct, it didn't stop the school project, there is a local appeal going on. And again, if the people, I guess the concern was with the planning board is that they could potentially be, lose a right to some type of appeal because of a thirty days versus twenty days, or there was some legal re-ification, I guess. And I'm not totally aware of it until I speak to town council. So, I would suggest that maybe you may consider making a recommendation at town meeting versus tonight, because I don't think there's enough information on it at this time.
I can recommend to pass over or vote it down? I don't see the need, I don't think clarification is gonna do it for me. I agree, I think the process works, works well. My fellow attorneys won't be happy with you, but I agree. The only people that make money by going to Superior Court is council. I mean, so if there's a way to keep the cost down for both parties, you're better off, the process is better.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but after an article is passed at town meeting, it has to go to the county general's office for approval?
Sure.
to go to the Attorney General's office for approval, is that correct?
Sure.
Okay, which this has done, when it was initiated, when this, when this idea was from the, from the Board of Appeals to the planning board, and it started at a town meeting, with the Board of Appeals as the, you know, the appeal to, no, no, the planning board sponsored the change. And part of the compromise between the planning board and the Board of Appeals was that we wanted to have the people to have the right to appeal locally first, that was a reason. So now, this came, this came to light, again, with this school appeal, but they're saying that it may not be legal, but I weren't really sure, there's some confusion, and if it passed at the Attorney General's office, I don't see why there's any type of legal reason, because that would be brought up, I would assume, after it was voted at a town meeting. Is that typically the way it works, Greg?
It seems to me it's, it's an issue where we can afford more rights, we can't take rights away, and that's what we're doing by this process that's in place, and has been in place for some time now, so.
I mean, if you want to pass over, that'd be great.
Mr. Chairman, moving to pass over Article sixteen.
Well, first of all, we're not sponsoring it.
Right.
You know, so.
So we can't.
No, no, we're not sponsoring, but, yeah. I would be in favor of not recommending and recommending passing over.
Okay.
It's not, we're not the sponsor.
I'll change my motion.
But why, why couldn't we wait till town meeting and get more information? Let's let the communication work a little bit, so Paul has an opportunity to reach out to Town Council and get some more information, and then report back to us, and we'll, you know, if they'll take CBA's recommendation and information, then we'll make a decision at town meeting. I don't think we should just kill it right here, right now, just let the process work a little bit.
Again, I just want to add that the CPC is having their hearings, and they may decide as a result of their hearings not to go forward with the article, you may not need to take any action. Again, this unlikely, but what I'm saying is they have their hearings that they need to go through.
Is that tonight? Are they doing that tonight?
No, well, I don't know if they really have any public meeting around tonight or not.
I know they were meeting tonight.
But they still have, they still have their hearings to go through.
Right.
So, I would ask the board that we hold off on recommended town meeting, let's try to gain some more information.
I don't have a problem with that, I don't think it's going to change my vote.
No, probably not, probably won't change mine either.
I'd like to communicate to the planning commission, we're going to hold off our recommendation at a town meeting, however, our initial inclination is to not support it.
Yeah.
And move to pass over.
I would draw my motion.
I, I would just, for my own identification, what project comes under a site plan review?
Typically, most of the, let's say, so we also do work on, we develop the site, or again, in Starbucks' case, it was, they just took over the bagel shop, but wanted to make some improvements on the outside. So they just wanted to improve the outside of the building, they had to go to site plan review. And again, as Steve explained earlier, there are provisions that, you know, they want to make things look nicer, and they want to do better for the community, there's no doubt about that, just that, in this particular case, if in fact, the applicant felt that they were appearing failing, they would have a right to, they go to the Board of Appeals. And say, look, this is a little bit disgusting, just as the school, the people who appealed
Or the butter.
Or the butter, correct. Okay, and then, because if somebody gets a project approved and they're happy with it, they're not going to appeal it.
Right.
Okay, so if somebody else feels directly impacted by it, that they have a right to locally go, so that, again, it could be in a front of a 28, that doesn't like something that's going, it's going in next to them, they have to go to Superior Court.
What's strange to, what's strange to me, now, I appreciate that, thank you, what's strange to me is, the school project issue caused CPC to do this. If in fact, council for the abutis is correct, what it means is CPC would prefer to see the project stopped.
So that's what will lead you to appeal.
I know, I said, I said that, but, no, I said that, because logically, if you carry it out, and now they're proposing this, then that's the situation of council for the abutis is correct, that's the situation we would have found ourselves in.
But they're looking at, I believe it says 20 days to the appeal, under the zoning, under an act, which would have been the high school.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the people, the abutis had filed the appeal, but in 20 days, Superior Court, the project was definitely in law.
They had 30 days to come before ZBA.
Well, but they were trying, the attempt, what I believe here is to make it consistent with the state regulations versus 20 days, the bylaw says you have 30 days to appeal it to zoning.
So why don't you just correct that bylaw and make it 2020?
That's what I recommended tonight, but they're saying, well, no, that's not quite the way it works, and, you know, we'll save it for tonight, but then, you're absolutely right, when I understand, if that, if this principle wasn't in place, you could file it, and everything's out of the way until Superior Court is.
Thank you. I have a motion to recommend at a town meeting, I hear that, and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have this one.
Michael, you're liaison?
Yes, I am. I will, absolutely.
Article seventeen.
Typographical, along with the Article eighteen, it's correcting language errors that exist in various sections of the zoning bylaw.
A motion on seventeen?
I am.
So nothing more, nothing less?
Nope, nothing at all.
Second. A motion to recommend in a second, all in favor?
You know what, excuse me, I would like to be more consistent with the rest of the board at this particular point, I would like to make my recommendation after I hear from the planning commission, so I would recommend a town meeting.
But I think on this one here, they proposed, they realized that there was an error in the system.
Just a word. Right.
I think this is somewhat different. I don't have a problem with that, but I just.
I mean, if you read it, it's pretty clear what they're asking it to do, but, I mean, I have no problem recommending it.
But, you made the motion.
Oh, did you make a motion?
I made it to recommend. And I seconded.
To recommend, that's fine.
A motion to recommend in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Eighteen, similar.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Motion to recommend in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Article nineteen is typographical errors related to the smack growth in Corralway District.
I will recommend.
Second.
So type, so, and for me, obviously, we have to go through this process, if it's a typographical thing of this nature, it's not considered sort of a script as ever, where you can just be corrected, and ask to go before town meeting?
That's the opinion from council.
A motion to recommend, and I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, this, my colleague and good friend, Mr. Foody, can take twenty through twenty-nine?
I think it's Mr. Missery, right?
I have sixteen through twenty.
Through nineteen.
So.
Sixteen through nineteen, twenty through twenty-nine.
We could do all that in one motion at a town meeting?
I'm sorry?
We can do all those in one motion, right, at a town meeting?
Uh, no.
I don't believe so, no.
The purposes tonight, they take Article twenty through twenty-nine to recommend, is there a reason for that?
I'll recommend.
I'm sorry?
Recommend the.
I will recommend, yep. Twenty through twenty-nine.
A motion to recommend, in a second?
Second.
In a second, all in favor, recommend Article forty through twenty-nine?
Aye.
Okay? Wasn't too painful?
Sure. I just want to mention that, excuse me, that one article was removed since our last meeting?
Civil fingerprinting.
Just for transparency.
Before we go on to the next item, I see that the Chair of the Finance Committee has joined us, and I believe she wishes to speak.
Hi, you're the Chairman of the Finance Committee. Last week, we were informed at the place, selectmen were voting on these articles from the sixteenth of this month. We were also told that the warrant would have to go to press on about the eighteenth. We had scheduled a meeting on the eighteenth of this afternoon, I went to see the town administrator, to see if they could go to press on the nineteenth, giving the Finance Committee a chance to vote on the articles prior to it going to press. Last week, we had a Finance Committee, we received a draft copy of the warrant, we made every attempt to go through the articles and we do something, but unfortunately, it was incomplete, there were no numbers, and it was still in the hands of Town Council. My understanding is that it came back from Town Council this afternoon at about 1:30. The Finance Committee was never informed that you were voting this evening. I found out at eight o'clock when I received a text message that you were going to vote. There's no way that I can pull together a Finance Committee group to come down here and do something on such short notice. And I take great conrage at this, I think that your agenda did not suggest that you were going to go on the articles, it said you were going to discuss them. We had one member that's out of the country, another member that's on vacation, I was in Cambridge at an emergency medical appointment until eight o'clock tonight, I couldn't get here any sooner. And I feel that if the Board of Selectmen, as they've suggested in the past, wanted our input, we can't give input without due notice. That's it.
I agree with you, and it's unfortunate that you were not given the correct information.
Well, but this afternoon, there was a lot of discussion about whether in fact, you could go to press as late as the eighteenth, and it was determined, and I then talked to Barbara Stantz, that in fact, you could not, and that you would have to have another meeting on the ninth in order to accomplish that, assuming you did not vote tonight. That was the last I knew. And I, I, I'm just really passing pretty bad this.
Mr. Chairman. Just so you know, we had a memo, and the town administrator did inform us tonight, our memo was incorrect, we didn't think we were voting tonight either, but it was a typo on the memo, so.
I understand, but you did not realize, you were going to vote tonight.
I just wanted to make sure you knew.
But you did.
Did what?
And you had the option to make another meeting on the ninth, and come back and do it. The Finance Committee is not even receiving the full warrant yet. I really think that that's such a slap on our face, it's not even funny.
What I can tell you is, most of the money articles, we did not vote to recommend this evening, we've had, taken the position of going to recommend at a town meeting.
It's a communication issue.
Oh.
No, I mean, it's nice that you didn't vote on the money issues yet, but, bottom line is, we still had no idea that your vote would take place tonight.
Mr. Prisco had said we, we put that position.
I understand that this was not some plot or anything else, but you had choices, and you chose to vote tonight.
Well, we, we didn't know, I'm sorry, we weren't informed on this, any impact regarding FinCom, or, we, I just didn't know, I mean, I had no idea.
Well, then, why you would?
Well, but I think what Mr. Prisco was trying to say is, in all due respect to you, you're telling us we had options not to vote tonight, we were presented with the fact that your request was made for us not to vote tonight.
Right.
I never made a request for you not to vote, I assumed that you would not, when I talked to the town administrator this afternoon, I said, there was nothing about voting tonight, that's number one.
Right.
I suggested that if you needed to vote before the thirteenth, which then became out of the blue, yet another date for the warrant to go to press, all right.
No, I agree, but let me correct, so let me just correct what I said there.
The town administrator suggested that he would talk to you about conceivably meeting on the night.
That was never discussed.
I, I mentioned to the board this evening that they had the option of voting this evening or carrying it out to a second meeting, but you weren't here to hear that.
No, I was not. No, I understand, but I don't know anything that transpired since.
And understand that I received the warrant back from Town Council today at 1:30 P.M.
And I just said that, I understand that, and my, originally, I had been told at the Finance Committee meeting of last week, we had the warrant, that the warrant was coming back from Town Council by four o'clock that afternoon, of course, that didn't happen, which is nobody in this room's fault, all right. But going forward, I hope that perhaps we can receive more than half an hour notice, and get the full information that we need, because you yourself, Mr. Delaney, have suggested that you would value the input of the Finance Committee. Can't do it if we don't have the information.
We didn't have it either, so that's why.
I, I understand.
Most of the financial articles, we did not make a recommendation this evening.
I understand.
And I wouldn't.
Nonetheless, it's, it's.
No, I understand.
It's very upsetting to me.
I, I can appreciate that, and I understand that.
Mr. Foody?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
I highly agree with you that, and some of the things that we actually decided to recommend at a town meeting was because of communication, and I've thrown out pot to make sure we communicate with the other committees, not Finance, but, you know, CPC and stuff like that, so, again, I, I agree that there should be some communication, we do value the Finance Committee's recommendations on all, on all the items that pertain to finances.
Thank you.
I apologize for the lack of communication and inadequate notice.
Why do I, you guys didn't know, I understand that totally, all right. But when you didn't know, and when your agenda said something else, your agenda that only went out this afternoon, all right, when that all happened, the town administrator offered you the option of voting next week instead. Just throwing it out there, okay? I still agree.
But, by not, by recommending most of these financial articles at a town meeting, in effect, it did the same as if we were to hold another meeting next week, I mean, you have five board members here to dedicate quite a bit of time, and just because there was some lack of communication somewhere along the line, I didn't feel the need, when the other alternative was to do exactly what we did, is to recommend at a town meeting, when by that point, we would have input from the Finance Committee, we can make an informed
I appreciate that, but I received 25 minutes' notice.
No, I, I understand, I understand. You know, I don't know what to say, so I just sit here quietly, and I just, I can understand and appreciate your frustration.
Thank you.
Administration project updates, Tom, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Chairman had asked me to update the board on a couple of matters that have been discussed, or at least been issues at recent meetings, and I wanted to update you on those. The first was on the legal authority for approval of warrants, and the approval of warrants is governed by state law, Chapter forty-one, Section fifty-six, which states that no money shall be paid by the treasurer, from the treasury, except upon approval of the warrant by the Board of Selectmen. And so the statute is clear that the proper approval for warrants releasing payments to vendors is the Board of Selectmen, and so that would stand regardless of any other provisions in the charter specifying another public official having that responsibility. So approval of the warrant, other than the Board of Selectmen would require an amendment to the charter, can't be done in the form of a bylaw, because it's contrary to state law. So anything that runs contrary to state law needs to be done in the form of a charter amendment, which can be done in one of two ways, either in the form of a special act, which is presentation of an article to town meeting, and then ratification through the Great General Court and the Governor, or through creation of a charter commission to conduct a review of the authority for approval of warrants.
I have a question. We have payroll, and we have vendors.
Right.
And first, I wish to apologize to all our veterans that receive checks. A week ago Friday, unfortunately, I had taken a vacation day on the Thursday, and I failed to sign the warrant, so I didn't have sufficient signatures on the warrant, and it delayed our veterans getting their checks that they depend upon on a monthly basis. I believe they weren't able to receive their checks until Monday. What I don't understand is, I believe, anyone who gets a direct deposit will get it, regardless of how many signatures appear on the warrant, is that correct?
All, all payroll is approved regardless of whether the board signs off on a timely manner on the warrant. Payroll, people are paid for the week that ends on a Tuesday, on the, three days later on Friday. So, so the practices become institutionalized long before the incumbent town administrator arrived, is that the town administrator signs the payroll warrant, which authorizes payment of payroll items.
So, then why is the payroll warrant in our packet for signature then? If you're signing, or the town administrator is signing the payroll.
If you're signing, or the town administrator is signing the payroll warrant, if the state statute governs, it sounds like vendors, I don't see the need for us to see any of the payroll warrants. So, we're just talking about vendors, and I would imagine the vendors, the, our veterans come under a vendor?
They are.
Okay. So, am I correct that based on what you've just said, if you're signing the payroll warrant, there's no need for us to see it at all or sign off on it? There's no requirement for us to see it or sign off on it?
I'm unsure, Sean. I'm unsure.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, is I'm unsure, because really, we're starting to get into a legal issue that we could get an opinion of council on.
Well, that's what I had hoped to have tonight. Mr. Prisco?
Is it possible for the veterans that receive checks that we can get them to a direct deposit situation?
We could if they're willing.
I, I've talked to several of them, and they're more than willing. And matter of fact, I think they have, some of them actually brought it up and have been told they can't. So, I, if that's possible.
We can do an electronic funds transfer for any vendor. It's just something that the town has not done, but it, there is the capability of it.
But that still doesn't treat them any differently as far as requiring three signatures of the members of the board to pay them as a vendor?
Correct. They, the transfer wouldn't go through until, until you guys sign the warrant.
Understand, but.
Payroll is a different story.
And we're, and I think there is an action to address that. My, this is a different, maybe a separate question, but somewhat related, is, I have been asked by several of them, why can't they have direct deposit? And I said I would ask the question, and I would ask if that's true, if I could, if it's okay if I asked the town administrator to have Susan Magna maybe work with you to get that list together, and you have the appropriate paperwork for the veterans to fill out, to follow that process correctly, and make sure you have the appropriate information to.
We would have to test it and, you know, make sure that it worked accurately before we gave, you know, the green light, but I could work with the treasurer and the veterans' director on that.
Mr. Ms. Chair.
You know, we, we made a big step forward switching to DocuSign. And when I got a call from one of the veterans saying she couldn't get the check, I immediately checked to see who didn't sign, and I called those three members. Why weren't those members contacted by finance at a specific date? By phone, not by email? Or were they, or did you try to reach them and couldn't?
No.
Because I've reached everybody. Or I left a voicemail.
The thing is, we get the email on a regular basis.
And.
When there isn't three signatures, the warrant is resent out, so you get an update notifying you, you know.
Yeah, I was just, I just wasn't looking at it.
I haven't been.
I had my cellphone on me, and I was taking calls.
You know, it hasn't been clear of, you know, whether I should call, or, you know, whose, whose responsibility this is, so.
You can call me. If you look, you see my signature, something.
Do you, do you get email on your cellphone?
I do, but on a day like that.
Then you could sign the document.
I could sign from my phone.
Then you could sign from your phone.
Right, but the issue was, I wasn't even paying attention to email that day, I just.
No, no, I understood that.
Oh.
I'm just saying, but, all we needed was three signatures, and it seems to me Joe responded right away, that as soon as he got home, he was going to take care of it.
I did, and then Michael said he already had.
Because I could do it from my phone.
Yeah, he could do it from his phone. I don't have, if I don't have my iPad with me, I can't do it. I don't get it on my phone, which I'll have to talk to.
So, I guess my, my comment is, usually we get that on a Wednesday, right, to sign?
Usually by the close of business on Wednesday, unless there's some issue.
So, if they're not signed by Thursday, perhaps.
Sure.
You know, a phone call, or a phone call to the chairman to.
Wake me up. Well, yeah, I mean, I'll, you know, Sean was able to give it, I'll tell you, my issue was, I had a question regarding the overtime. Now, knowing that payroll has no correlation to us signing the warrant, I'll sign the warrant. I, you know, I was holding off because I wanted my question.
Well, I don't know if that's true.
Well, that's what I was told by the town administrator.
But you can, you can skip signing the payroll and sign the vendor section.
Um, no, it won't let you skip.
I tried once and it didn't.
It won't let you skip. I tried.
Won't let you skip?
No.
I tried once.
Believe me, I, because I've had.
We can send them separate, we can send them separately.
I thought you could.
No, I don't want to make, I don't want to make.
We don't want to create more work, okay?
Send it as one, we're going to get clarification from council on issuing a payroll warrant. If it doesn't matter, remove the payroll warrant from our packet, if that's what town council says.
But I don't think you need to, even if the issue is resolved that it doesn't need our signatures, I still don't mind looking at the information.
We're not saying we don't want the information.
Well, I like to look at it, but it seems like every time we raise an issue, we get accused of being micromanagers.
That's why I don't sign anymore.
I don't want the issue.
I'll come up, put it right in the record. I don't sign payroll anymore, because I've been already labeled as a micromanager. I continue to find issues in there. There's trends in there that are clear, there are issues that the town administrator doesn't want to address, so there's no need for me to sign it. And I've been very clear, I said that openly in this meeting. So, you're not going to get my signature, but you have four other board members that are more willing to do that.
I'm just surprised to hear, I never knew town administrator until tonight signed off on those, so.
That practice, again, became institutionalized long before.
I don't care when it started.
I'm making appointments.
I never heard, Mr. Valiakonos, I never heard, we've had these issues before, we've raised whether or not you review the payroll, and you never once until this evening said you sign off on it. And now I hear that you do. That's it.
But the matter's been brought forward because the veterans weren't paid.
Right.
Because we didn't have three signatures of the board members to pay them. The vendor, portion of the bills and payrolls.
I lumped it together when I requested Mr. Valiakonos to give us an update, because it's been kicking around a while regarding whether or not we had assigned and where the authority comes from. That's why I asked the question in conjunction with the veterans issue. That was unfortunate. So, it was lumped together as all payroll war, uh, warrant, the weekly warrant.
Warrant, bill and payroll warrant.
That's it.
Vendor and payroll. Bill and payroll warrant.
Yeah.
Okay. How about that, 100 years?
Just because something's been done for 100 years.
No, no, again, there were years, there were, there were times past when, when I only signed certain portions of the bill and payroll warrant.
That was easier when you can come in here and sign them. It, it, I tried it twice, and it didn't allow me to do it.
You can still come in and sign them.
Yeah, you can still paper it down.
Correct?
Yes.
We can still come in and sign them.
If you would like to revert back to that.
No.
No, God, no.
We put in place the electronics.
I may, I may do it that way.
The system's a great system. The failure.
They're getting a lot of advertisements for it, as a matter of fact, if you've been getting those, advertising for the DocuSign.
Thank you. Mr. Valiakonos, next issue?
Hi. Veteran Services, interesting dovetail into the next item. So, the board asked me to update the report that was conducted by the Mass Department of Veteran Services, and the report made a number of comments about the operation of the local Veterans Department, and items concerning physical accessibility and other matters involving that office. One of the comments that was found not to be in compliance was, the report stated that the office was not handicapped accessible because of quote-unquote, "the doorway was inadequate." The comment that was made was incorrect. The town hall is handicapped accessible, including the veterans' office and Room 10. The veterans' office has been told on several occasions that they may reserve Room 10 for conferences with any handicap or other individuals who wish to have a private meeting, which cannot be conducted within the confines of the Veterans Services Office.
Okay, well, wait, can I stop you there?
Of course.
Is or is not the Veterans Agent office, I'm not talking about Room 10, because she's in a closet, okay? Is that office that she's in, is that handicapped accessible?
Right, because she has to have private.
I'm not looking to make an accommodation, because she has her computer there, she has access to all this information, and that office is shared with another department, the services. So, I don't, in my opinion, believe that to be an adequate and private meeting area. So, can you answer my question regarding?
I don't, I don't know, selectmen Delaney, I don't know.
So, we need an.
I haven't measured that office, we'll measure it, but I can tell you again, the law requires reasonable accommodation.
Well, the issue raised by Veterans Services months ago was the fact that, in their opinion, the office, not Room 10, the Veterans Agent's office was not handicapped accessible. So, I would have thought that this evening, you would have given it.
The Veterans Services Office can use any private meeting space in the building to meet the letter of the law.
She has a private office. A veteran comes in, she has her computer there, she has access to all her veterans' material. To, to ask her, because there's a handicapped veteran that comes in that can't get in that office, because it's not handicapped accessible, is not acceptable.
I understand your concerns.
So, my question was, is her office handicapped accessible or not? That's the baseline question. I'd like to have that answered.
Of course.
Mr. Prisco? There is one other small issue that goes along with it, and she has to have private and sensitive discussions with people, and if there's a meeting going on in that room, and she's in her office having a private discussion, is that really the best environment to, to conduct that kind of business? It just doesn't seem right to me.
What are we suggesting?
Where, where are we putting? Suggesting is, we've got to find her in office, that she can have private meetings where she's not going to be interrupted, that somebody doesn't have to will themselves through a meeting that's taking place to get in and out of her office.
We have similar issues at the senior center.
Yeah.
You know, we have similar issues throughout town hall, throughout town government, so.
What are they? I haven't heard, I didn't, I didn't hear that we had the same issue at the senior center?
It's been, it's been an issue there for years. I mean, if you have, if you had a meeting in there, and you're.
The wall inside Mary's.
Well, it doesn't even, maybe it goes to the ceiling now, but big deal. There's no insulation on the wall, and it's, you know, it's an actual chamber.
There is, there are offices in, in the senior center that you can get in, close the door, Mary's, Perine's office is fairly sizable. You can get in, you can close the door, you can have a private meeting with her.
You have to whisper. You know, how private do you want it to be? You have to whisper, and there's a lot of sensitive information that's, you know, shared there also.
Okay.
Along with, I would imagine, health agent, town clerk, people going in to vote.
Well, Mr. Larry, the veterans that I've talked to are uncomfortable about it. They feel uncomfortable. I'm just voicing their opinion, okay? This didn't come from anyone else but the veterans, so you can do what you want with the information.
It's a question to, it's a question of, how, are we going to address this one specific issue, or are we going to look at it?
Well, I'm not trying to make a pen to response here.
We have a state agency who's come in and audited us, and has issues. I think, and I have no doubt we have issues out in other places, but we, we need these issues addressed, and either respond accordingly that, no, in our opinion, it's handicapped accessible, or we're taking measures to make it handicapped accessible. I think we have an obligation to respond to that audit, and make sure we're providing an adequate area.
And I think in that audit, they talked about the HIPAA laws, right? And, you know.
No.
I think there's an issue there. You, you can go ask me yourself.
I understand your concerns. Again, the, the moving of that office was done out of necessity, because we had to expand our IT operations into the office that was formerly occupied by the Veterans Department. It was not something that we did willingly or gladly, but it was something that we had to do to be able to accommodate our expanding IT operations. So, so again, in, in a perfect world, that was not a wonderful solution, and it was not ultimately what I wanted to do. But given the fact that we, we had expanding needs in our IT department, which we're all aware of, and we had health concerns in the IT department with individuals and employees working side by side with electronic equipment, we had to make some changes. And those changes were made, and, and I apologize to the board and to the veterans of the community, but we really had very few other alternatives. We looked at other alternatives, and it was decided that expanding or providing an office in Room 10 was what we considered to be reasonable.
Do I continue, or are you done?
Uh, there are other questions that you have.
Well, the other issue was following the budget hearing, the Veterans Services budget. This greatly concerned the state Veterans Services Department, was the understanding, at least, the conversation you had with our Veterans Agent, that you suggested she should curtail her outreach to the veterans in turn, in regard of her making veterans aware of what benefits are available to them. Have, has there been further discussion between you and our Veterans Agent indicating that she shouldn't curtail, curtail those efforts?
I ultimately recommended the budget that was presented to town meeting. I believe that stands for what my opinion and my support for that department was.
Not, when you, in my opinion, when you tell an employee to curtail certain efforts, if you don't have the follow-up discussion to say, disregard that, you still have given that employee the same directive. And my question was particularly, did you have a further discussion with the Veterans Agent to disregard your comment, your statement to her, to curtail her outreach efforts?
I did not.
I think that needs to be done. I know our Veterans Services is waiting for a response concerning, concerning that particular issue. Please, when you do it, can you please notify me?
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. There was another issue where I believe you recommended that veterans should set up appointments and appointment times with our Veterans Agent.
Yes.
And I know that greatly concerned the Veterans Services.
Yes. Yes, I did, and, and I expected that the private conversations that I had with my department head would remain private and not be discussed at a meeting. But that being said, since the cat is out of the bag, you'd be more than happy to address them.
It went, it went to, it came out as a result of the audit.
Correct.
The Veterans Services Administration showed up in town hall. Mr. Valiakonos, there was outreach to you before they arrived.
Mr. Valiakonos has no problem stating the fact that he requested that, but what I do wish, is I wish that my department heads, when they have a private conversation with me, hold that as a private 101 conversation.
There was an audit done by a state department.
There's, but when you, okay, I'm sorry, Selectmen Delaney, what is your question again?
Town hall was open Monday through Friday, certain hours of the day. I don't think any other department sets up appointment times. I think it's unfair, and I believe the Veterans Services also see it this way, that to require veterans to set up a meeting time, the Veterans Agent, when this town hall is open Monday through Friday, they should be able to walk in when these doors are open and meet with every department they wish to meet with, especially the Veterans Agent. They shouldn't have to schedule times.
I think the concern that we had was that there were people that were in the building, and I'll read you what my response was, and you can react after I read it. Persons waiting to be serviced from this point forward should wait in Room 10. I suggest that persons who meet with you periodically be scheduled for appointments at a specific time. This will reduce the number of persons who show up all at the same time and then are required to wait for your availability. What I was trying to do was make a constructive recommendation to her, that when there are a number of people that all show up at a particular time, that the easiest way to do is to schedule them for appointments to avoid a logjam of people waiting at the office. It was not meant in any type of vindictive way.
But that can be said for any department. I mean, the building apartment could have 20 people waiting to have their plans.
But, but the difference.
You didn't suggest that they get appointments.
Ah, but the Veterans Department, when Mr. Deco is unavailable, he's got a secretary and staff who are there to be able to respond to the people that do come in. When someone comes into the Veterans Office, there is not staff that's available, and when she's tied up in a conference. I made that as a suggested management recommendation to her.
And it's still your recommendation?
It is.
Maybe those were the, the major issues in that audit.
What is the department, State Department that did the audit expecting back from us?
They were expecting a response, and had expected one. I believe from the town administrator, I understand, we had reached out before their visit, post their visit, to my knowledge, the most recent communication I received from the agent, Mr. Hill, but there was no response.
So, I take it based on this discussion, there will be a response?
Well, I'm going to follow up with them. I don't know what the Administration's agenda, but I'm going to follow up.
Well, I guess I'm trying to understand who's responsible for responding. Is it the Veterans Agent? Is it Mr. Bailey Conas? Is it a member of the board's?
Mr. Bailey Conas.
It's the Town Administrator.
My belief, it's the Town Administrator.
Yeah. It's an audit. He reached out to him.
That was, it was called a site visitation. Now, the word audit has been used, but I have the report. It's called a visit report.
Okay, okay. I don't think it really matters what...
So I guess what I'm trying to find out is, call it a site visit, call it whatever you want, there were a list of items that they flagged needing change, improvement, or whatever, requiring some kind of a written response to how we're going to deal with it. And I guess my question is, who's responsible, and when is it going to be done? And get this matter off the table.
I'll communicate through the chairman with my responses.
I think you should respond to directly. I'd like to see what your response is, but I think you should respond directly to Mr. Hill.
That's what I meant.
Okay. Do you think that can be done within two weeks?
Yep.
Thank you.
Next.
Can we go to the Town Administrator's report?
Sure. Let me know when you have it.
We're set.
You there? Okay. At a recent meeting, it was mentioned that the town website was in need of upgrading, and I agree. And toward that end, I will be putting together a plan for submission to the board to update the website this calendar year. They will involve meetings with the IT staff after the MUNIS transition is complete to determine the number of new user licenses and online training, which is necessary for employees. Please note that in the past, Administration primarily updated the website when the IT was a division under Administration, and IT now reports to Finance, so we will need to coordinate this task with the Finance Department.
Mr. Masary?
It seems to me when the website was first created, and there were a number of licenses, which, and training that took place by various departments, the Town Clerk, the R Office, and there may have been a couple of others. And it was the specific departments that were responsible for maintaining their section of the website. It wasn't one person's job back then. And I don't think it should be one person's job, unless they were ready to hire another person, I don't think we are, to keep those areas of the website up to date. Now, when I go to the Town Clerk's area, generally, most of the items that she's responsible for are up to date. So it seems to me that where it's fallen down is in other areas. And I kind of like that area, that approach, because it's those specific departments that know what's current and going on within their own domain.
Right. Because otherwise, you're going to have redundancy. You're going to have one department saying, okay, this is what we have to update, and then you're going to turn to IT and say, okay, make these updates. And I agree, we don't have the staffing, everything that's being undertaken in Finance, with MUNIS and everything else, I don't know how they could possibly tackle this as well. I think it'd be very difficult. The staff of IT is two. Yeah, it's not going to work that way.
I think it's very unclear who is responsible in the different areas. For example, Board of Selectmen. I wanted to find some minutes from the Board of Selectmen. I wanted to look at the website, and the last minutes that were on there were from 2011 or something. So that's simply not clear to me. It's not clear to me who's responsible for the finance committee stuff going on there.
Well, I think that's what has to happen. First, it has to be this global meeting where it's identified in each area someone that's responsible for that particular task. But that's, in my opinion, I think that makes the most sense.
So I think it needs to be made clear, and I think that everyone needs to be aware of who's responsible in a given department. So if they can call and say, hey, guess what? You know, you've got the R Committee members on there. Guess what? You know, you're trying to find minutes from where I'm going or something like that. So there's no way of not. And maybe add something to the little excerpt that says, "The committees, departments, and everywhere else."
Are the board members going to weigh in, or how is she going to?
No, I just think, you know, some of these volunteer committees are going to need assistance from our regular staff, though, in order to maintain part of the webpage. So I think that has to be factored in somehow, somewhere. I mean, minutes is the clerk's. You know, anything as far as posting current events and upcoming events and things of that nature, you know, I don't know, who, you know, like you say, Fourth of July Committee, are they going to be responsible for their portion of the webpage? Maybe, maybe not. You know, Youth Services, we have a Youth Services Director, so we're okay there. So I don't know, I just... There are certain areas which are going to need to be picked up by regular staff.
I agree, but I think the vast majority can be done within each department.
Right. Well, I disagree, and I think it should remain that way, responsibility-wise. So if something isn't updated, someone's going to be out responsible for it.
Okay. Mr. Prisco?
It's been a long time, though. If you look at our website in general, it's been a long time, has not really had any facelift at all. And I just think we're at a great opportunity here to make, maybe make an investment. And it shouldn't take a significant amount of money to get Liz, one person, maybe for three months, to really revamp that website. Better pitches, better look, user-friendly, because it's very disjointed. I don't know, Liz, if you have an opinion on it, but this is the time. If we're going to make an investment in our employees to train them, we should train them on a website that's a little more user-friendly, a little cleaner looking.
We do have a service. We have a company that supports our website, so if you want a different look and, you know, ease of navigation to it, we would have to explore different vendors to, you know, take over the website. Currently, Virtual Town Hall is our website provider.
I view it as a two-step process, though. I don't disagree with Mr. Prisco, but unless it's updated, I don't care how pretty it looks, it's not going to be usable. So I'd like to see it all updated.
About point.
Then, once we get to that point, then we can consider, you know, changing the face of it.
It's not a custom website. It's a website which has been designed to have portals that a trained employee can access to make changes to specific items. The overall look of the website can be enhanced by different information, different pictures, and I'm sure if you talk to them, they probably have additional layouts.
There's different layouts and forms.
The goal, for me, at least, my goal, my motivation here is to improve communication. Try to get more people in town to get onto the website every once in a while and see what's going on around town. And it doesn't welcome any of that. We need to find better ways to communicate, and obviously, you know, electronics is the way to go. Electronic media is it. So we're just really in the dark ages on our website. And I'd agree with Mr. Delaney wholeheartedly. You have good information in, you're going to get good information out. You have bad information there, you're going to get bad information out. So that obviously is the priority. But all I'm asking is, is it worthy of maybe a three-month investment? Because I think at three months, you could pull off a pretty damn good website. And you're not talking a tremendous amount of money, but I think it'll bring a tremendous value to the community overall.
I just can't, I can't support that right now. I think it's pointless until it's all updated. Until we're current, it doesn't make sense to do that.
Maybe we address it in the next year's budget review process time. So between now and then, at least get the website organized, and then maybe we can make a...
Do you know what you're paying for?
It's small money that we pay every year.
Yeah.
Because we just, I remember that under Retirement Board, we just hired a new company, and even then, they're small money, too. I mean, you're talking $1,500 a year, and maybe a little bit more to set it up at the beginning. So after that, it's, and what they're going to build is supposed to be just what exactly we're looking for. In other words, personalized, as opposed to just, you know, the virtual City Hall or Town Hall.
Correct. I do think that first and foremost, we need to have a meeting internally and find out, you know, what everybody's role will be. You know, I know that the Town Clerk has some ideas, and there's a Boards and Committees feature to Virtual Town Hall, and she has mentioned, you know, going forward with that. So I need to figure out where she is with that, because then that updates many of the pages on the website. So I think that's something that we need to do, you know, prior to the FY15 budget, because if we are going to, you know, have an article that, you know, hire somebody to do all of the modifications for us, we would need to know that, so...
Sure. Good. Next?
Next. He asked me to update the status of whether we filed for the Quinn bill, and we do. We received no reimbursement, but the Police Department continues to file for it, and the event funding is restored at a future date. So again, we received no dollars for it whatsoever. Update on my contact with a cellular telephone company interested in a facility at the Swan Pond Water Tank. We presently have an antenna attached to the tank. The company that I've spoken with is interested in a long-term lease, meaning between 10 and 20 years. On a 10-year lease, the scheduled payment to the town is approximately $275,000. The way we determine that is when we put it out to bid, anyone who has a matching bid to the winning competition is able to join on at that cost. So the $275,000 represents the value of the present lease that we have on that facility with a 3% inflationary factor per year. Please keep in mind that final approval of any wireless facility is required a special permit granted through the Community Planning Commission. Tell them, Danielle, good evening. And Town Meeting has already approved a zoning bylaw amendment for this particular location, releasing this particular location. Questions?
So it's roughly about $25,000 a year is what we get? Is that normally what we're getting across town?
Yeah. And we bring in about $260,000 in revenues across the board on all the facilities that we have in town.
Annually, total?
Total. And this would add to that total.
$25,000, that seems kind of low. Is that typical across other communities?
What we do is we put it out to bid, so it's whatever the bid market, the bid market allows for, and we allow multiple connections to the water tank. So as a result, we're able to have the taps have up to multiple two, three locations per water tank. So the revenue that comes into the town is pretty ambitious, but again, the bid market determines exactly what we receive for revenues.
Thanks.
Update on the security upgrades to Town Hall. The next phase of the project is the installation of interior and exterior security cameras. The projected budget of that is $11,000, and then we will proceed with the rekeying of interior doors that cost about $2,500. As you know, the FOB system has been installed and is being fine-tuned to meet the needs of Town Hall users. All of the above projects are on budget and are scheduled to be completed in calendar year 2013.
Mr. Bailey Conas, I just have an issue, a question regarding the operation of the FOB system. For instance, this evening I got here, probably about 6:00. The door itself was locked. They used the FOB that allowed me in, but I needed a key to keep the door unlocked for anyone else that was coming in. Is it on a timer system?
Yes. No. Use your FOB to get in, let the door close behind you and lock. The doors will be unlocked at 6:30 in the evening for the public to come in and attend any meetings. So at 6:30 PM...
That's what it's programmed to do?
It'll be unlocked. Yes.
It's programmed to lock?
Yep, and you don't need to... At the end of the evening, myself or the last user has to go through and physically lock their two doors, this door here and the center rear door at the end of the evening, where they FOB.
And tonight, we have to lock it with a key, too?
If you've opened it, yeah.
I opened it. Sorry.
It's all right. I couldn't lock it two weeks ago. I mentioned the old fire tuning.
I didn't, when I came in, it was still locked, I had my FOB, but then I thought people maybe would be wanting to come in.
I blamed you guys two weeks ago. I couldn't lock the thing.
In any organization, they'll be given that instruction, if they have a FOB, if that has to be done on the way out, so it's not timed and locked.
You'll note that we have signs that have been put up in the front and rear of the building directing people to which doors are open. The two wing doors in the rear of the building are locked now. They're for employee access. The center door and the door right here for after-hours evening access.
My understanding was that if you use the FOB to get in and it remained open, that if you went out before 10:00, you need to use your FOB to close it, otherwise at 10:00 it automatically locks. Is that true?
I think that's true. I mean, what I think, you missed my comment saying it's being fine-tuned right now.
Okay.
We need, yeah, we need two windows. We need the doors to lock at 4:00 and the doors to lock at 10:00. Or regardless of whether anyone keys in, keys out, or whatever, doors need to lock at those times. Next. I attended a meeting at UMS Boston on municipal performance management. Performance management provides data to measure the quality of services provided to the public. The essence of performance management requires fostering a collaborative relationship with employees. I plan to look further into the model that they described at the program, whether it's adaptable for North Reading. The conference was interesting, but one of the things they didn't talk about was what's in it for the employees. Because if you talk about a collaborative relationship with employees, employees want to know what's in it, and that piece was not talked about at the conference. But I know that there are a number of communities close to Mr. Fode's Chelsea area that have taken advantage of this and use data in terms of measuring the quality of services that are provided. And it's an interesting concept that at least is something that's worth thinking about going forward for North Reading, perhaps in the future. Next is I did hear back from the Andover Town Manager today on dates to resolve the purchase of water through the inter-ministerial agreement. I provided him with the latest versions of what we had negotiated under Section 3.1, which dealt with the North Reading rate. He indicated to me that he'll be meeting with his chairman this week, and will be getting back to me after he meets with his chairman, so I wanted to report that to the board. Next is I spoke with Town Council on the Pine Forest Park subdivision and conveyed the positions that were taken by the board at the meeting two weeks ago, and that involved the location of the water mains, the requirement for a road bond, and the contribution to the sidewalk plan. The developers' concern is really the location of the water mains, and the developers have been indicated that the location of the water mains was depicted in the approval that had been granted through the CPC for the project. So that's not really an item that's negotiated. It was not covered in any of the agreements that we had with Mr. Petracino, and if he wishes to balk, then he has a right to file an appeal, however he sees fit. But at this point, I've conveyed through Council that the town's not in a position to compromise in terms of the location of the water line. Chestnut Street Truck Exclusion. Meetings have taken place with Reading and Wilmington on the truck exclusion for Chestnut Street. The Wilmington Board of Selectmen is due to meet and discuss and vote on September 23, and once we have their approval, we'll be able to put together a truck exclusion package and submit it to Mass DOT for approval. We're hopeful that we'll have it, and I want to thank Mr. Carnavale for assisting in that process. And then lastly, the Covanta Contract Amendment that we talked about a number of weeks ago has been approved. I received a signed copy back. Keep in mind that the contract lowers the tipping fee, and the estimated savings over the next six years is $122,000. So it's substantial savings to the residents as a result of approving this new contract, which is in fact through June of 2019. That's it.
Thank you. I see that, you know, Planning Administrator and two members of the Community Planning Commission, I'm sure they just came from their meeting, and they want to discuss some of the Maran articles. Am I correct?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden is the chair? Is he the chair? No?
Mr. Pierce is much better versed in this than I am.
I defer to Mr. Pierce.
Actually, the...
If you could come up, we'll put the microphone on the podium for you.
Boy, I was... Boy, I was, you know, we talked about the warrant, but did any objection?
Loved it, Mr. Pierce. Nice to see you here.
Yes, thank you.
I've been taking the...
Well, our concern was about the change that was proposed for the method for handling appeals.
Site plan review?
For site plan review. Because site plan review is a special permit, the state has a very specific method for handling it, and the way we've handled it in the past with the, with the 30 days, well, let me, let me just backtrack for a minute. This all came about as, as a result of a question brought to us as, from, from a Board of Appeals hearing about, about the appeal process and about whether, an attorney said that realized that they had two avenues they were following, the 30-day appeal process that we had, but they knew they had the state one, too, the 20-day, which they could fall back on anytime they wanted to. And so we looked at that and said, geez, you know, we really are not in compliance with the state law. We, we have our own little way of doing things here, which doesn't really, doesn't really jive with what the state requires us to do anytime when there's a special permit. There's a, there's a specific process for appealing it, that's in 48. So, and we looked at it from the perspective that we're making people wait 30 days when we can, we should only be making them wait 20 days. So let's adopt the state law and take 10 days off that appeal period so that people don't have to sit around for a whole month waiting to begin their project. And that was the, that was the genesis of the, of the, of the change that we, that we brought forth, which really isn't a change, it's more of an alignment with the state, you know, bringing us in line with what the state requires as a permitting process. Town council was a little, is, said that the way we do it now is problematic because if, if somebody decided to appeal something 25 days into the process, there could be a problem with, if, if they end up going to the state, the state could say, well, you know, you waited 25 days, the 20 days is up, no appeal. Because it's, it is a special permit, because a site plan review is a special permit, so.
I would see this, two avenues. They can choose to go directly to Superior Court. If they choose to go that route, that's a 20-day appeal. If they choose to go the route of going to the ZBA, bylaw allows them 30 days to come to ZBA.
Well, but is that legal? Town council doesn't believe that that's legal.
My understanding that Attorney General's office signed off on our bylaw when it was passed by town meeting. What year? Was that the 41?
Several years in notice. A few years.
A long time ago, and, and, and there is, I think there was some confusion at that point about the fact of whether or not it was a special permit. Site plan review in our case is a special permit. If it was a not, then you could do the 30 days and you could do what you want to do. But as a special permit, site plan review is controlled by 48, and there are no exceptions in 48.
So, but this has been done for a number of years, a few decades, right?
There are a number of things that have been done for a number of decades.
Instead of taking this approach, are we not better off having the AG's office review what we have in place now and issue an opinion as to whether or not it's legal or not?
I, I imagine we could do that, but the state, but 48 is quite clear. I mean, you know, you could, it's not very many sentences. You could read it pretty quickly. It does not mince its words. So we can, we can continue, well, first of all, you're about to say there hasn't been any real issues, and that's correct.
Right.
So, so the point is, why are we making people wait 30 days when there haven't been any real issues?
Well, you could have, you changed that to 20.
Changed it to 20.
Right. It sounded like that's where you intended to go.
Yeah.
Can I add something? Actually, thank you. In an early draft of this proposed amendment that I shared with town council, I had actually left in zoning board of appeals with a 20-day appeal, and I received a call from John Gold Rosen, and he said, no, take it out, you can't do it. It's, if it's a special permit, that's not how it gets appealed, you can't have it going to the Board of Appeals. I don't have that in a written opinion. This, I, there were a number of verbal conversations that, that he and I had over the course of, you know, as this evolved, but my understanding is that as it currently is, we're, we're not in compliance with 48, and it's, it's very possible that...
48 tends to special permits?
Yeah.
Yes. The, it is judicial review of all special permits and variances. So the ZBA has, there are special permits that they issue, the CPC is also a special permit granting authority and has special permits that they issue. Site plan review is a special permit, and as, as such, it's supposed to follow the avenues set out in 48.
But aren't we still better off before going down this road? Because it seems like the process we have in place works. I'm not saying stick with it because we've been doing it for years. I'm saying it works. Why change it? If the AG's office is going to say, oh yeah, this is fine. If they come back and say, oh no, it's not, then...
If I can just, let me point out the problem, what could happen here. Basically, we've, the two boys have worked well together. In other words, where there's been an issue, we've talked about it, and so we really haven't had much in the way, over the last 22 years that I can remember, one or two.
So why would we want to mess with that?
Well, well, because we haven't had to send anything to them for this, for this appeal. That's the point. So, but let me tell you what the process, what could happen here. Let's say we had a contentious one. They wait the 30 days, or 25 days, then they go to, and then somebody appeals it, doesn't have to be the person that got the decision, it could be somebody that doesn't like the decision. Now they got another 20 days on top of their 25 days, on top of the amount of time it will take them to get to the Board of Appeals. So they could, it could go, it could go months. We could be holding somebody up for, for a minimum of 45 days and maybe even longer to, to start, to begin a project. And I think that if, if, if that, if it came to that, somebody could certainly come back and say, you know, could certainly point out to us that the town is not following the law and that they've been damaged by that.
But if the AG has signed off on it at some point in time...
Yeah, I don't know the...
But if they, if they did, that's my understanding...
Basically, when the AG signs off on something, they sign off on it for content and, and, properly put, make sure they have definitions and everything. Let me just give you one little quick background, too. One of the things over the years, I've gone to a bunch of different meetings, you know, planning board and appeals board meetings with, with APA and different groups, and in many towns, the appeals boards do more of this kind of work than the planning boards. The planning boards have, are more involved in, you know, community planning things, you know, you know, like economic development, things like that, and the appeals board would deal more with some of these things. But they have large appeal boards that are all elected and, you know, you know, there's so many different ways that they're formed. The law, the 48 is written to it to address, no matter what board it is, whether it's an appeals board or a planning board, but in many towns, the Board of Appeals does site plan review.
But I can foresee the AG's office saying, you're affording the parties more rights, not less. And when that occurs, typically they say, that's fine.
Home rule is more strict, not less, as a rule.
I think that one problem I could foresee happening here is that somebody who wished to appeal a site plan review decision could accuse the town of misleading people.
That's right.
With the way that our bylaw is written, it says, the appeal, if, if you were to take an appeal, take it within 30 days to the Board of Appeals. It doesn't say anything about the 20-day process.
Well, maybe that's where the change needs to be, is you have to include in there or...
Or, the discussion that I had with town, maybe, the discussion that I had with town council was that 48 doesn't provide municipalities with alternatives. It's directive. It's, this is how the appeal process is to go. I, I think it's entirely possible, I don't know what year our 30-day appeal bylaw was put into place, it's entirely possible that that was in place prior to 48 in its current existence. And I have a feeling that that's how that happened. There are lots of towns that had remnants of, you know, older appeals laws that were changed and cleaned out once 48 came into being. I, I have a feeling this was one of those types of remnants. I, I fear that if we leave in place, even if we're clear about it, two alternatives for an appeals process, that it, that there still would be confusion, not only on the part of somebody who wished to appeal, but because there, there are some implications. If you apply, if you take an appeal to the ZBA within 30 days, construction doesn't stop on the project. A building permit can still be issued. If you take an appeal within 20 days to the state, project stops. Not everyone will understand that. Lawyers will understand it. I don't know if we're going to be able to explain that.
Why would we want to put people in that, if we didn't have to? Why would we want to put people in that position?
Because you've got to put them in a, in a more dangerous... First of all, let me make one thing clear. We have no problem with the process the way it is. It's, it's great, we have, we have had no issues. However, however, we, we've been lucky that somebody hasn't decided to pick us up on it and take us to task on it because we do not conform to the law. It's in the, in the law, and as she said, the law is, it's definitive, there are no alternatives in it. So, so I mean, the, the fact that we haven't been picked up on it is partly luck and partly because we've worked well, we've just made it all work out.
It, it, it works the way it is.
Thanks.
If there's a way, I would like to see if there's a way for the AG's office to weigh in on this before we make any change, or if we propose to them changing our bylaw that says Superior Court 20 days, ZBA 30 days. What, what are you shaking your head about?
Because, because as soon as you get past the 20 days, you lose your rights. Done.
No, because then, no, no, because then, then you could have, no, because then it can be fashioned that if you go the route of your 30 days to the ZBA, your 30 days to appeal to the ZBA, you preserve your rights. It can be fashioned that you preserve your right to go to Superior Court until the final determination is made.
You'll have to rewrite 48.
I actually don't know that that will preserve anyone's rights, and that, that really is my...
So you're saying right now, if someone, someone is not happy with the ZBA decision...
Right. I think they've given up their right to...
They've given up their right to go to Superior Court.
I believe that's the case.
We may have a test case coming, please.
Yeah. Because it'll be over the 20 days and the law is, the law is definitive.
That's the one, the one we've had.
I hope not, I hope not, but...
Well, no, that, we're talking about this, this issue was appealed. They, they, they lost it anyways because they didn't have the information gathered until 22 days, right? That's when they, that's when they, that's when they filed...
They were aware, they were aware that they could stop the project by appealing within 20 days, because their lawyer called me and we spoke about it, and I knew that she was aware that, that there were two different processes going on, and, and she had kind of said to me, oh, well, in spite of your, you know, your 30-day bylaw, or if you can take it to the ZBA, she said, anybody has the right to, to do the 20-day appeal through 48. But there, there, I, I do think it's problematic to have, to have this conflict between the two processes because people, while there's never been a ruling on it or a case where we've seen it played out, I really do fear that somebody would find out that they had lost the right to...
No, I understand, glad you pointed out, but I don't see the harm in getting an opinion from the AG's office.
Well, there would be no harm until, until, until it happens.
But I'm not saying wait 10 years to get an opinion from the AG's office, I mean, like next week.
So you want, so in other words, you want us to go to get an, an opinion from the AG's office, see if you can get a quick opinion from the AG's office?
You want to see if...
I don't care if it's quick, I want an opinion.
You want to see if the AG will overrule town council?
Right.
Well, we haven't seen it, we have nothing in writing.
No, 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 no.
From what I understand, there's nothing in writing.
There's nothing in writing from town council, so...
That's right.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't categorize it that way. I would like to see the AG to weigh in on, this is what we have right now.
Is that a request that we can make? Because I've never done that, so I don't know.
And the other, the other thing is, is, you know, if we can incorporate our current practice by tweaking the time deadlines, that would be my preference. I would like to keep in house and not force, we go to Superior Court, force the town to defend themselves, you know, if we can avoid it.
Yeah. Well, I, we, like, it's perfect for us, we have no problem with, with, with the process the way it goes right now, except for the fact that you, you're asking us to tell people something which is not true, that we don't...
Well, no, no, I'm not, I'm not, we're not asking to tell people something...
You're asking us to tell them that 30, that they have 30 days and that their rights will be retained for 30 days, and town council's saying it will not be retained for 30 days.
Well, I haven't seen anything written from town council, all right? So they haven't issued, in my opinion, they haven't issued an opinion, all right? But I think there's a way to preserve someone's rights to go to Superior Court while affording them the opportunity to go before the ZBA. It's a process that works, I think, terrific.
Yeah, I think originally, and correct me if I'm wrong, originally, the site plan review did fall under the purview of the ZBA, and the change was go to the CPC.
To give it a bite in time.
The CPC, no, the CPC wanted to take it under their auspices. This is under the whole, guys, the 28 improvements and the whole thing and all that discussion was taking place.
Yeah, we're talking 40 some odd years ago.
No.
Isn't that 70, 70s?
This issue was at that old. I'm old, but not that old. But it was under the ZBA. CPC wanted site plan review to fall under their purview, and the compromise was put it under CPC with a, an appeal to the ZBA. That's, the original proposal was, it was, it was already ZBA, CPC wanted it, the compromise was CPC gets site plan review with an appeal process to the ZBA before they go to...
Well, I think...
And, and again, still preserving their right to go to...
I mean, one of the reasons it went that way is, is because they had staff, you know, the planning board had staff, and that was the reason that it went, the other, at, at that point, so that was one of the reasons.
I understand that, but I mean, that's what, that's what transpired. It was originally under ZBA.
And a lot of towns, the, the ZBA does the site plan review, there's no, that's why I said that, because that's true.
Is it, is it also just terminology? Is it because you consider your site plan review, if you grant it a special permit?
No.
What if you work, no?
Yeah, well, okay, so...
Yes, and I got to know, so...
It's more than terminology, but site plan review is by special permit, and that's, it's very clear in our bylaw that that is a special permit and the CPC is the special permit granting authority.
Okay, and that's where you come out of 48?
Exactly. If site plan review were not by special permit, we could do any appeal process we wanted.
Yep, that's true.
So this isn't affected, this change won't affect that?
No, no.
Oh, no.
No, no. What I'm suggesting now is, they may have to change where they consider the permit they issue when they approve a site plan. If you take out the words "special permit," we're not in this situation.
I, I would not...
Take away, you know, there isn't a Board of Appeals in the world that would want, that would probably agree to that, because it takes all the power away, the Board of Appeals from...
What do you mean? No, 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 no.
It would be, you're saying CPC that do site plan review.
Whatever you issue when you approve a site plan, right, you change the wording from "special permit." It seems like the special permit language gets more than...
But you can't get site review.
It's not just the terminology, it actually does give the CPC...
It changes, changes the ability, the power.
It does, it changes the authority that the Board has in reviewing projects.
That's what I meant by no, it's, it's not the same at all.
You can't do a site review at that point, you can't do it.
You can do a site plan review, but you can't really deny anything.
What happens is a lot of the stuff in site plan becomes by right, as opposed to special permit, and when you start giving them all by right, then it takes away your ability to control it.
To, to do what?
It's better to have a special permit.
It takes away your ability to do what?
To make, to, to have any control over what's happening. They end up having a lot of things by right.
Oh, a site plan review, if it's not a special permit, site plan review is by right as long as they meet certain criteria, and it's, it's, you almost can't deny anything.
So you don't want that.
We really don't, I don't think anyone in town would really want that.
So it is.
Yeah, it's useful, it's useful.
It is. I was not, I was not wrong. See, he was saying yes to one thing, I was saying no to something else.
It can be done, but it shouldn't be done.
Yeah, yeah, can't be done.
Mr. Hayden, originally...
You gave up your time, Tim.
When Mr., when Mr. O'Leary, when he said that originally the ZBA did site plan review, they gave that, they were, they would have to be appealed to superior court. And then they allowed it. So, they were, they changed there, but they kept those words in there because...
That was the only way you were, that was the only compromise you were able to agree.
Well, yeah.
The only way that you were gonna succeed at town meeting was to, was to agree to the compromise where there would be a local appeal first before anybody went to superior court.
Right. But, you know, we're gonna, we'll see if we can get an opinion.
I've, I've no experience with getting an opinion from town council.
I think if we talk, if we talk about it...
I can find out how that's done.
If we talk to town clerk, I think...
I think that is probably the cleanest and the easiest approach. I don't think, based upon our discussion here this evening, if you don't already know, we are probably not gonna recommend this article unless...
We can also get an opinion in, from, from KMP in Wright.
Probably faster than we can get one.
You know...
Yeah. I'd like to see the one from the AG.
Well, let's see what, you know...
If the AG comes back and says, "You can do what you've been doing," then...
But I'd also like to ask them, though, if they say, "No, what you have is in conflict."
Right.
Saying, "What if we brought it in line from a day, you know, twenty day standpoint, keeping the local site plan review process in place?"
Well, actually, we tried to do that already.
But also, KMP said no.
And that, we, we, when she submitted it, they, she, she, that's what she, when we first realized...
Yeah, that was KMP. I'm saying, no.
Yeah. KMP said, "No, you can't put those both in."
And the other important part of that is also, if they choose to go the route of coming to the ZBA, they still preserve their right to go to superior court.
Only because of the twenty days, yeah.
Right?
Well, we would have to ask the AG's office then.
Yeah. We're not looking, we're not only gonna say, "Choose." We're looking to say, "Here's an intermediate approach, but if you take this approach and you're still aggrieved, you can go to superior court."
Timing wise, you'd be correct in that, in that if, if, if both, if we, if we, if we could have a parallel process with both of them twenty days and they appeal within the twenty, as long as the board of appeals made a decision before that twenty days was up so that they could still have retained the twenty days to go to the state.
I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. I'm saying that if they choose to go to the ZBA within twenty days, they still preserve their right to go to superior court. You see that?
If, yeah, if they don't like the decision of the board of appeals, right.
Well, yeah, you can appeal to the ZBA to superior court anytime, if, if they're, if they're an appeal body.
Well, normally...
I'm not looking to give them one or the other. They should still have both.
Normally, well, normally, the way forty A works is a special permit decision is filed at the town clerk's office and the clock starts that day.
Oh, I understand.
So, and that, and we would be an exception from any other city or town if we were to ask for the ability to preserve an appellate's right for twenty days beyond. But I'm happy to ask the AG's office.
But I think it's important to ask and I think it makes a difference as to what I and board may do in terms of support of this article, depending upon that answer.
Who's taking the action? You guys taking the action to get legal counsel's written opinion?
To me, to me, to me...
Greg is, Greg is, okay.
To me, what's more important is the attorney general's opinion. Because town council can give us an opinion and then we may pass something and then the AG still says no. I'd rather get their opinion before...
So, who's taking the action, then? Can we review that, those two things?
Well, you know, council has relationships with the AG's office. Town council has a relationship with AG's office, with the AG's office. So, to me, you know, I'd like to have town council render an opinion as to what we have and where the conflicts might be. Also, ask them if there's some way that we can bring the ZBA into the, keep it in the process, you know, and then can they communicate that with the, with the AG's office and get their blessing or say, "No, that's the way we've been doing it is wrong." But I, I think, you know, couple on a page have a longstanding relationship with the attorney general's office, probably on a weekly, daily or weekly basis. So, let's utilize it, get their opinion. But again, this board's wishes, I think, we talked a little bit tonight, is to maintain what we have as far as the local appeal process before anybody goes to superior court, if we can maintain that.
Well, we, and we have no problem with that. You know why? Because by doing that, it saves us, it saves everybody money. It saves the town money. Because if they go to superior court, we have to, we have to defend. So, don't permit it think that we think this is the greatest thing in the world. It's not. But, but fortunately, it's the law. That's what they're telling you. Because our ability to, our ability to solve the problems here, you know, within our boards is, is, is a valuable asset.
Absolutely.
But not if it runs into a problem and then, and then suddenly they find out that what we've done is not correct and that we've misled them by them thinking that this appeal process that they went through was gonna protect them when it wasn't. That's the problem. That's the concern we have now.
That's our main concern.
That's our main concern.
And I would agree with you with that.
Okay.
So, therefore, I'd like to have...
Don't misunderstand what we're trying to do here.
I'd like to have Greg and Danielle, I'd like to have Greg and Danielle, before you, but Greg and Danielle handle it with Greg, particularly with town council. But, so we're all on the same page. Makes sense?
Well, she's already had a...
Can you let them know that?
She's already had a communication with town council.
The conversation. So, we have...
I had the conversation with town council. What I don't have is a written opinion from town council. All I have is a written approval of my language.
But he also, then they reviewed the article itself.
Yes.
Yes. And made changes to it. He made changes to the article. He made changes to the article.
I think the connection is there...
There, there's no doubt that what's being proposed is probably in conformance with state law.
It is.
Yeah.
I don't doubt that for one minute.
Yeah, that's what the issue, the issue is...
But to me, you know, can we allow for additional local review prior to...
If we can, it'd be, it'd be a good thing.
Right.
But, but if we hadn't already asked that question, then I would say, "Good, let's do that." But we did ask that question.
To town council.
Yeah.
Yes.
We just didn't get it right.
She asked all the questions. We have a lot of information. She asked a lot of questions and we got a lot of answers. We tried a couple of different ways, including keeping them on parallel tracks with the same timeframes and everything else, so...
Before you leave, have you even seen the proposed retaining wall bylaw?
No, I haven't.
No.
It's a copy. We'll have it electronic sent to you. I'm afraid I have to...
When Greg comes back, we'll ask him to send it to you, but there's a paper copy.
Well, we have, we have, if zoning board is in there, we have to have a...
Public hearing.
Public hearing, which means we have to put out notices next Monday, which is really a push because we haven't reviewed this at all and our quorum is gone because our meeting was over.
We, we understand that.
So, we were, we basically voted to say, "No," because it's, it's so, you're, you're asking something to happen so quick. We can't review and do it right and then do it right for everybody, the town and the, and the townspeople. So, I would say we do it in the springtime if you want. And there are some things in here that I, I know that we don't really like because...
None of them really affect us, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Well, it depends on, if you're talking about walls and retaining walls for septic system, then we do know about it because this...
This is going to be retaining walls generally, which includes...
But if it's a septic system, then that's, that's under state purview.
Well, well, town has some help.
Council, council has drafted this and is...
Okay.
Yeah, it is not reimagining the wheel.
Yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't really affect us if, in any way, you know, because it would just be something if it was a bylaw.
I'm not looking for you to...
It'd be included in the, in anything that we gave to somebody who was doing it.
Yeah, it's kinda quick for us to do in a week.
Um, but I will say, if this is a zoning amendment, our board will need to schedule a public hearing. So, we would need to do that if we were to schedule a public hearing. We need to advertise for that hearing on Monday, if, if we're to do a public hearing prior to town, I mean, the earliest we would be able to do it would be October first.
Well, it has to be done before the town meeting or it has to be passed up.
Right.
Right. Exactly. So, just to give you a sense of that timing.
So, do you think there's enough time? You can review it, pull your comments together and, and hold a public hearing?
Do you?
You can get back to see. You don't have to make the decision.
As you do, but I mean, obviously, this has been an issue that's, you know, been in the public venue for, for months and this is the, the results that have come from it to address, you know, what we perceive to be issues which will be cropping up on a more regular basis because of the type of land that's left to develop.
Right.
And we don't wanna get caught in another situation like we just got caught up in Bishop's Way. So, too much timing is, is important.
Okay.
Stackfellow, your request.
Yeah. We'll, we'll see what we can do.
No pressure.
All right. We'll see what you can do.
No pressure. Sorry it wasn't communicated to you.
Well, if we look at, because there are things that could have been done in that one that was, that was, that created the problem, you know?
But it's too late now.
They needed, but this might, if it, if this is correctly done, it might encourage some of the other boards to give some leeway to make these things work a little better.
Right. And, 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 and border health, border health is something to be drafted for them[1428.82]